All right, I'm going to call the meeting of the Westwood Planning Board to order. If we could begin by standing for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. My name is Dave Atkins and I'll be chairing this meeting. The meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center and if anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting is that when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments, then board members will ask questions to the applicant. The public will be given an opportunity to comment following this. When it's time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. And once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Now, first of all, I'd ask if there are any changes to the agenda?
Yes, you have one change. Item number three, that's the limited EIDR public hearing for 340 Clapper Tree Street. They have requested continuing their hearing until your meeting next week on Tuesday, March 19th, back at Carby Street, that's 50 Carby Street, if you could vote on that request.
So I'll make a motion to move the hearing for 340 Clapper Tree Limited EIDR Public Hearing Application to next week, Tuesday, March 19th, at Carby Street, 7.
Second. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, so that hearing will be continued to March 19th. The first item on the agenda tonight is 45 Clapper Tree Street Green Company. This is an open space residential development special permit public hearing, a proposal to construct an access road for 40 age-restricted residential dwellings, condominiums, open space area, including preservation of existing fields, meeting facility, stormwater management, landscaping, and associated site work. The applicant would like to approach the podium and begin.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. Thank you, good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Terry, I'm counsel to the applicant, the Green Company. First of all, let's introduce the Green Company team. We have Daniel Green, the president, David Calagaris, chief executive, Mark McNeil, chief financial officer, that's Mark, Curtis Quitzau, our engineer, Rick Moranis, vice president of construction, and Alan Green, the chairman and founder of the company. And as the chairman said, we are here before you with an application for an open space residential development special permit pursuant to section 8.3 of the zoning bylaw. This does concern property located at 45 Clapper Tree Street in Westwood, currently the location of the Westwood Lodge Psychiatric Hospital. The application proposes to construct 40 new age-restricted residential dwellings. Project includes preserving the existing athletic field for town use and a parking area, open space areas and a community meeting facility. As you know, this is a several-step process. The Green Company developed a plan based on the criteria set forth within the bylaw. They met with the land use committee for a pre-application review. They received their recommendations and made some modifications to their plan. We then organized a neighborhood informational meeting, which was held December 3rd last. We came before you on December 11th for preliminary review pursuant to section 8.3.15 of the bylaw. The board issued a decision approving the density of the project at 40 units with some conditions. We've also received a demolition approval from the historical commission after a hearing on January 3rd. In connection with that process, we have a plan to incorporate some artifacts from the historical structure on the site into our meeting house. So we're now here for the final review process under the bylaw, section 8.3.16. We've submitted to you a full set of engineered site plans, floor plans for the units and the meeting house, a landscape plan, a stormwater management report, a traffic study, a financial impact report, and an affordable housing proposal. We have received initial comments to the submissions from Beta Consulting, to which our engineer has provided responses. I believe the filings that we have given you establish that the proposal is in compliance with the letter and spirit of the bylaw. By clustering the development in a creative way, the impact on the land and the surrounding neighborhood is reduced. The project will be far more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood than is the existing hospital. The project preserves already over 50% of the property's open space, including the continued use by the town of the existing recreational field, and the project provides sorely needed senior housing for the town, as well as affordable housing. And as outlined in the fiscal impact analysis, there will be no negative fiscal impacts to the town as a result of this project. Without further ado, I'll turn to Dan Green and let him take you through the project.
Thank you, I'm Dan Green, I'm president of the Green Company. And we've been before the board before, back in December, with our preliminary application. This one's similar but more refined, so if it pleases the board, I'll do an overview and keep my comments more brief and let you ask questions and let the public ask questions as well, if we want to get into the details. So, the basics are, we've been building for the empty nest 55-plus market for over 40 years. Obviously, I haven't been for that long, but he has, Alan. And it's something that we feel we're good at, and what's up here is a list of all our awards. And every community we've built since the 1970s has won at least one national design award, and that's what that's showing. To orient everybody, this is an as-built. It's not quite as good as I had hoped, but this is Clapper Tree Street, sorry, let me speak to the microphone. This is Clapper Tree Street, Winter Street, Sherman's Way, and Colby Way. And this is the existing buildings that are there, and this is the soccer field. This is the version of what we're proposing. So the OSRD is mostly in green there, and it's outlined that way. What we're doing is creating six A&R lots, so you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And those will be separate, not part of the OSRD, but we're showing everyone what it's going to be, because part of it is, this is a site for the affordable housing, which I will get into. One of the things in the last hearing that people mentioned is they didn't want six driveways onto Clapper and Winter Streets. So what we've done is that this home lot 2 will access to our internal drive right here. 3 and 4 will have a common drive down their property line. 5 and 6 will both access off of our internal drive. So we wanted to do the same with lot 1, but in talking with the affordable folks for the group home, it's a safety issue. They really need access directly to get emergency vehicles in and not have them looking for an address if something were to happen, or to have a shared driveway that could be blocked. So we're asking that those be allowed to have access directly onto Clapper Tree and the common drive onto Winter Street. We've got a green belt of open space. There's a very technical definition of open space. One of the things that our engineer will talk about is the waiver, but the soccer field is actually not in allowed use, so we'll need a waiver to keep that as open space. It will be deeded to the town, and based upon what happens at this meeting, we'll come back with lot lines to show what parcel we'll be giving to the town. But basically, it would be something that encompasses the parking area, which is very hard to see here, I apologize. There's 40 parking spaces here and the soccer field. And this little notch right here is actually very important, because that's where the well is for the soccer field, and that would be part of what goes to the town. I mentioned the affordable home, and we've been working with LifeWorks for a group home. They have a pretty neat project that is for five people. It would be five units of affordable housing on the SHI when it's completed. And if we have questions, we can direct it to them. And we talked about the access to Clapper Tree Street for that. So at this time, their access point is on the right-hand side as we look at this plan. So the open space is to be kept in its natural state, per the definition. Most of it is actually already disturbed, so we'll be revegetating in areas and augmenting what's there, but trying to keep a larger buffer than required to all the neighbors. The soccer field will be for the town to use in perpetuity and will be via a deed. It will be some form of covenant on the rest of the open space to keep it open in perpetuity so that it cannot be built upon. Oh, I'm sorry. The roadways here will all be private. So this is our internal roadway. And all the utilities will be private. It will use town water and sewer, but we'll be installing them. And the electric will be installing as well, private plowing and trash removal. The fiscal impact report states that we have a positive net income of about $500,000 per year. That's the revenue that we bring in, less the expenses that should be incurred. That report and over $100,000 in building permit fees will come in as the project is developed. That's from our consultant, and according to our consultant, and both the fire chief and the police department have reviewed that. At build-out, according to our consultant, will be the seventh largest taxpayer in Westwood. All right, our engineer and our fiscal impact consultant have met with the fire chief and spoken with him, both spoken with them directly. We've answered their specific questions. One item that was brought up at the last hearing is this curve is sharper than subdivision regulations. Our engineer will address it, but the fire chief was comfortable with all turning radii and that he felt it was safe. Traffic volumes, we've provided responses to the peer reviewers' questions. We just gave it to them late this afternoon, so I don't expect that we'll have any feedback on it, but I did want the peer reviewer to know that we've accepted most of his comments and that we'll be addressing all the others with discussion over the coming weeks. With traffic, our new traffic volumes are low, much less than when the hospital was here, and our site distances are good, and we've answered the peer reviewers' questions directly and our engineers. We have a traffic consultant here to answer questions if people want to hear more about At our entrance, there's currently a stone wall and two stone columns. One of the peer reviewers' questions was, can we replace the wall up to the new road location? Because this road shifts slightly a few feet to the, it's currently located just to the right of where it's shown on this plan, and we will happily replace the stone wall using those same stones. And then when we get to our entrance in the landscaping plan, we'll use stone pillars similar to what was there originally. We have a meeting house, which you can't quite see on here. We provided floor plans on the web. And it's a gathering space. It's a place for people to socialize, neighbors to get together. It has a front porch, it has a living room, it'll have a TV and a fireplace. We will be putting historical elements into it. The items include mantles, doors, old cabinets. These are all from the existing structures on site. We've met with the historic commission about that, and we'll be going back to confirm that this is what they want and this is what we can do, because we have to make sure we can save it from the existing structures. The meeting house is a private-for-residence building. The building commissioner had many questions on our homes, and they're all duplexes right here. So these are two, groups of two. We will address all of the building commissioner's questions. They all seemed readily answerable, it just wasn't as clear as he wanted it to be in our presentation. Each of these homes is a maximum of two bedrooms. There's an option for a second floor, and when we do have the second floor, the second bedroom that's on the first floor becomes a den, and it meets the town requirements of at least a six-foot opening and no closet, no door. And so we have designed that. The peer reviewer did find a mistake in one of our plans and we'll correct that. With these homes, you can see there's a private courtyard on each of them. The home is shaped like the letter C, and that's so that the living spaces are focused internally around the living space or around your courtyard. It's very private. On the back, there's a deck, and some of the homes have a porch in the front. It's really California seamless indoor/outdoor living, where you can bring the outside in and live outdoors even in the winter. We're all pretty hardy, and I think many of us grill and like to take advantage of that space. But we also have it so you can be social and you get to know your neighbors. This is our landscape plan, and I put it up to show the street trees. There's a requirement in town, each of these street trees, there are 68 of them that will be going in, they're 30 feet on center. There's about three of these tall trees that will be in each duplex, in front of each duplex, to really bring down the scale. And our company is known for landscaping. That's what we pride ourselves on, is that we like to have some larger plantings in there. It makes the community feel like it's already been there for a long time, and that's what we've tried to establish. In addition, based upon some of the peer reviewer comments, that we're showing plantings on the buffer, and they're right along the buffer. It's showing evergreens to make it so that it protects people's privacy in both directions. But in addition, we'd like to say, create a pool of 200 native deciduous shrubs and 2,000 white pine seedlings that we will use to augment the landscape in the areas to create more privacy from the backs of our homes to the neighbors on Sherman's Way and Colby Way rather. One of the things that's a little different, we took from the preliminary meeting, a meandering walkway. And so we're showing no walkways along the actual street. Instead, we're showing a walkway that goes from the soccer field and works its way all the way down to Winter Street, effectively connecting the soccer field and Winter Street so that anybody who's coming from the neighborhood in Chase Estates, or Della Park, or any of the neighborhoods to the south, have an easy way to get to the soccer field away from traffic. It's actually safer, it's more aesthetic. It will wind partly through, under the tree canopy, and through the open space of the community. And we feel this is an important feature because of the aesthetic of the community. We've used the four-step design process and really focused on saving the green open space, which in this case is the soccer field and the buffer to the neighbors. We've put all the homes as tight as we can in the center of the site, but making it, it still shows up as tight. And so putting a sidewalk in on this side of the road, we feel will dampen the aesthetic of the community, and that it will feel much safer to not have to cross the driveways and to have it there. We've been doing this for 40 years, and from what we've seen, we couldn't remember the last time we've ever built a sidewalk in one of our communities because the traffic flows are so low. And that people enjoy walking along the edge of the road, which a lot of us see in many neighborhoods when it's a very quiet street. As part of this too, because we have a waiver for the sidewalk on one side of the street, we'd like to donate the cost of that, which is $60,000, to the town. I'm not sure if there's a complete street fund or other sidewalk fund so that the town can use those funds to create sidewalks where it feels is appropriate.
So there is a sidewalk fund?
There is? Okay, great, so that's what we would donate that to. And we have some budgets that we can share with the board after, over the coming days if they want, that would show the cost. It's a little bit less than $60,000, so we round up to $60,000 for our contribution. Getting into the specifics of the homes, we have lots of landscaping in the front. Here's the street trees. And this is the entrance. So we have, this is once you pass the soccer field and come into the actual community of homes. Sorry. So here's the stone columns that are emulating stones that are at the front of the coming in right now at Westwood Lodge. We would place another one on the right-hand side so that we mimic the columns. And giving you a sense of what the homes look like, how the trees really bring down their scale and the type of landscaping we do. These are the plantings at the entry and the wall, and then it goes to a horse fence that continues along behind the soccer field. This gives you a sense of what our duplexes look like. So here's that courtyard that we talked about. This is actually the master bedroom, this is the living room or family room, dining room, and the kitchen. And this is what we call a summer room. So it's really outdoor living. You think you're coming up to the front door and you open it, but you're in a roofed-in area where people can put a fireplace or have an outdoor seating area. So even when it's raining or the weather's inclement, but it's warm enough, you can be outside and enjoy the weather, and enjoy being in the outdoors. And then you have a nice seating area or lounging area, however you want to create it, and access to the back of your home. This is used exclusively by this left-hand home. The right-hand home has its own courtyard. And you can see a walkway going down to it and a patio area and a front porch to be more inviting to meet your neighbors. And again, this is representative of the type of landscaping that we do. Here are some pictures to see what it's really like. So this is that courtyard on the outboard home. So that's this courtyard right here. And you can see the porch that's on it, other views of it. And then this is the walkway down approaching it, just giving a sense of the privacy that can be created in tight quarters. And then a view from the inside, this is the kitchen and the dining area and the family room at the back, dining kitchen, and how the outdoor living area with the sliding doors really becomes a part of how you live. It really enhances and expands your living space. Sorry, this is so small, but one of the other things that I wanted to touch on was drainage, because that's a big issue. And basically, all the runoff that comes from here to about this point will be going into detention basins that are on the backs of lots 4 and 5. And they're in areas of lots 4 and 5 that are already cleared. We'll be doing that with an easement, and it'll be open drainage. Coming in on Clapper Tree Street up to about here, we have a high point, and all the drainage from this portion of the road will go to an underground leaching chamber that sits behind homes 6 through 7 or 8. And then the balance, which is around this corner, will be in an underground leaching chamber to the side of the homes here. One of the comments that our engineer will be addressing is that the peer reviewer had a question about the distance of the leaching chambers to neighbors and came up with a 100-foot suggestion that the underground detention be 100 feet. And that's something that we'll be working with the peer reviewer, because we're not sure of the basis for that distance. We couldn't find it anywhere.
Mr. Green, I wonder if you could, I know we probably have some questions here in the peer review, and if you're, do you have a few more things or?
I think that you just got to the end of it. That was it.
Great, thank you.
Perfect timing. I'd like to now open it up, actually, I have our engineer who is going to just talk through one or two issues, and then we can open it up to questions at any point.
Great, let's hear from him.
Okay, Kirk.
I'm Curtis Quitzau, I'm with VHB, and I'd like to touch on the waivers that we're requesting as part of this project. Most of these you've already seen. These are the same list of waivers that were submitted as part of the preliminary plan review. And so I'm going to just touch on them quickly, and so we'll start from the beginning. So, the first is, the bylaw requires location of 10-inch and greater trees on the site plans, on the existing conditions plans for survey. We had requested a waiver to allow us to locate the 24 inches, and that's what we located. The second one, 8.3, 10.3, addresses landscape of the open space, requiring it to be preserved in its natural condition. And as Dan noted before, a big chunk of the open space is the soccer field, and the soccer field obviously is not in a natural state. So the waiver is to maintain the soccer field within the open space. 7.3.7.7 requires a presentation model to show a project, an OSRD project, and we requested a waiver because we didn't see how that would help understand the project any better. It's not a single-building kind of project. Some of the design standards that we've asked for some relaxation on, one was the street location and alignment, which is section 4.2. And the purpose of this is to create separation between the streets, and we're looking to basically utilize the existing commercial driveways on the project site, and that doesn't quite meet that spacing. The street width and curvature is, the minimum centerline radii of curved streets for a local minor street is 150 feet. And what we've asked is that the curve in the middle of the project be sharper, and it'll basically function as an intersection where you pull up and make a right or a left-hand turn. And this was satisfactory to the fire chief, so we thought that that was a reasonable Section 5 are for roadway improvements and construction specifications. The zoning bylaw points to the subdivision regs, but we remind everyone that these roads are not subdivision streets, this is a condominium project, and that the roads will all, in fact, all the infrastructure will be privately owned and privately maintained. So that there's, and because of that, we've designed the roadway infrastructure, the same as we've designed pretty much all of the Green Company's communities. And these standards deviate just a touch from the subdivision standards. I'll try to see if I can get that. And these are the differences. The first column, it identifies on the left, the design component or the construction requirement. The requirement's in the middle, and what we're providing is in the column on the right. And generally speaking, we're deviating by small amounts, and again, these are from subdivision standards that are anticipated for publicly-owned streets. So we were asking for a slight reduction in the overall pavement thickness from 5 inches to 4. Our sidewalks, which we talked about before, instead of having them on both sides, at one time we talked about having one on one side, but we've proposed this meandering path to connect Winter and Clapper Tree and the soccer field together. Sidewalk gravel, this is the base underneath the sidewalk, 8 inches versus 12 inches for the sidewalk. Same with the pavement, it's 3 inches rather than 3 and 1/2. Grass plots, there's none because we don't have, we're not proposing sidewalks along the street. And then we're proposing a modified Cape Cod berm, and so everything associated with the curbing system is also part of that waiver request. And then, just taking one step back again, the last one is in section 10.1, there's a requirement for the sewer main to be buried at 7 feet of cover. The minimum requirement is typically 4, and we're just, we've got a force main, a pump station with a force main. And instead of burying the force main down at 7 feet, we'd be looking to put it with probably 5 feet of cover, so we're just asking for some relief for that. We don't really understand why the town would require further, but again, because all the infrastructure is privately owned and privately maintained, it didn't seem like an unreasonable And with that, I'll And with that, I'll turn it back over to either the Dan or to the chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to hear from, uh, Mr. Paradis, our peer review, and then we'll hear some staff comments, and then we'll have board questions. And just to kind of set expectations, I know we have, um, we have a lot of people here that want to hear this issue, and after this, we have another issue that a lot of people want to hear, so we're, I would like to try to encourage everyone to be concise and, um, not repetitive with questions or, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, my name is, for the record, my name is Phil Paradis with Beta Group. Uh, we've been tasked by the town to be a peer review consultant, uh, to look out for the needs of the town as well as, uh, the butters. So I don't, I don't want to sort of reiterate, uh, I think they've, uh, talked a lot about the issues that, uh, we pointed out in our, in our letter. Uh, if you have particular questions and, and concerns about those. I want to point out a few other observations that maybe weren't discussed, um, relative to the, uh, requests. So, uh, I have a letter that was dated, um, March 7th. Uh, I understand there was response to comments. I did not see them at this point, so I'm not sure exactly how they addressed, uh, all these questions. But I do want to point out, uh, the fact that, um, that they're proposing, uh, a gravel parking lot for the soccer field. Just want to discuss, I think you should discuss whether that's appropriate. I think if they, if they're including it in the open space, it'll put them over the 5% maximum for their pavement or impervious area. We are, uh, we are, they are proposing a berm around it, so we would, at a minimum, need to figure out how they're gonna construct it, uh, and keep it there. So we would like to see, uh, the adjacent properties, the houses that are within 100 feet of the, of property, just to make sure that, uh, what they're proposing, um, relative to, uh, screening and, uh, stormwater management, uh, is appropriate relative to those. They'll have to provide a stone sign. I think they address the artifacts issue. So, in my, my, my reading of the, um, open space residential development, uh, regulations, um, I'm not sure that the meeting house actually supports the open space, which is the, kind of the requirement of, of section 8.3.10.3. They indicate it's supposed to be a private, uh, meet, uh, facility for the development itself, uh, so I think there should be some discussion whether that's appropriate. Um, so we'll also need some, uh, some details and easements, obviously, for all the proposed walkways that are trend, trends, uh, crossing the additional subdivided lots. And also the footpath between the soccer field and the temple as well as the pro sidewalk. So I think there should be some discussion as well on, uh, the appropriateness of sidewalks. I think we had, we did have a discussion during the preliminary design phase about, uh, the width of the sidewalk, and now it's, now it's gone. And also, uh, DPW is interested in, in providing, uh, a sidewalk, uh, along Winter Street, along the exterior of the lot, uh, to pu- to connect, uh, the sidewalk that's existing at the corner. So it's primarily on Winter Street. Uh, and then providing some accommodations for bicycle, bike racks, especially at the soccer field and meeting house. Uh, there was discussion, it looks like they're gonna emphasize the fact that there's only gonna be two bedrooms per unit, uh, and we would recommend that you provide a deed restriction on those units, uh, just to protect that. So some of the subdivision regulations, uh, that, um, included on, 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 on the, on the, the, uh, figure you just obs- observed, uh, one of them, um, is a right-of-way width that, uh, would be, be between the two lots that are proposed to be subdivided out off Winter Street. So I think there's a 40, 40-foot, um, right-of-way or close, it's scaled about 40 feet, so, um, that would have to be either a waiver or added to that, to that section. So, yeah, there's gonna have to, they're, they're showing the easement, they're showing the stormwater management, um, facilities on, uh, adjacent lots. Obviously, they have to be easements for the, the, uh, homeowners association or whatever to maintain those, uh, and be able to access those. So we, we're also, they're proposing a sewer lift station. We'd, we'd expect some design plans and calculations supporting those. I'm not gonna go through the individual subdivision. What you saw was, you know, again, if it's gonna be a private road, they're gonna have to maintain it. I think one of the things you want to consider is, uh, whether or not you want vertical granite or, uh, allow them to put in the, the berm. And obviously the sidewalk issue. And then some of the stormwater issues are primarily just, uh, the, the soils, uh, in this particular site are, are classified as A soils, so highly infiltrative. And we don't see an issue with, uh, them providing opportunity to recharge all, all the runoff on-site, which is what happens today. The, the only issue that we had is the proximity of the fairly sizable infiltration structures, uh, subsurface infiltration systems, uh, to the, uh, the neighboring street's homes. So infiltration, uh, infiltration systems are, they're, they're required to be set back at least 100 feet if they're up gradient of, uh, of a home. Uh, and so I, it's, it's, it's virtually flat out there. So I don't, I don't think, I, it's difficult to say that they're, they're down gradient, but we would, I think there's opportunities, plenty of room on the site to at least spread it out more or not, not concentrate it so, so closely to a few homes, so. Uh, and then there's some just housekeeping issues. So, relative to, um, traffic, uh, we don't see, uh, a huge, uh, impact from a, a primarily residential, uh, facility, uh, relative to the, the facility that was there. Uh, there, there will be a reduced, uh, um, traffic load. Uh, the, the, they're proposing to use the driveways that have been existence for quite some time, so I think the local residents are used to those locations, and, uh, we don't see a whole lot of issue with those. Um, we just would like a little bit more, I want to say, housekeeping to make sure the numbers actually work. Uh, we are, um, they're depending on the, um, um, ITE's trip generation manual, uh, for this particular site, it's, there's not a whole lot of data points in the, in this manuals for that, for this particular site, so we'd recommend that you, you know, just give us some data from similar sites within, within, uh, this area. And, and also just taking a consideration, the soccer field. Now, I, I assume that soccer field's been there for quite some time and been operating as, as one of the town's soccer fields, so, um, so I, I don't see a lot of change coming because of that. Relative to landscaping, um, we was already addressed the, the stone walls. I think that's what we would be considering, um, recommendate, recommending. Screening, uh, so there's a number of, um, on-site, there's a considerable amount of, stockade fence, wood stockade fence. Some, some sections are in disrepairs. They don't really follow the property line that well. Just wanted to make sure that these were either maintained or repaired and/or replaced. Maybe we should have some discussion on those. Uh, and it sounds like they've addressed some of the screening issues that we recommended, uh, relative to, um, screening the butters from the prop, project. Uh, they are showing, uh, four, uh, streetlights, um, and each house will have a, um, a light on the, on the front of their house that should provide for residential setting, uh, adequate, uh, street lighting, uh, lighting for the area. Uh, we just asked for a few more details for that. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, at this point, I, any?
Yes.
Abby, do you want to, uh, I believe we have, uh, some other materials?
Yes, you also received a letter from the town administrator on behalf of the select board in your, in your packet. Um, this letter is, um, in general support, um, this project is, this property is in a residential zone. Uh, they're supportive of this residential proposal that is more conforming than the prior use, which was the hospital use. And this age-restricted development is limited to 55 and over, um, so that provides an opportunity for, um, long-time residents to stay in town and provide more housing opportunities. They did have some concern that the project was too dense, um, and they're supportive of the, um, proposal to keep the field used with appropriate-sized parking lot and, um, support for providing the 15% affordable, um, as required. You did, um, what you should discuss tonight, too, is the affordability requirement. Um, the zoning requires 15% of your project, um, of the OSRD, the, um, open space project to be, um, affordable units, uh, which in this case, it's six units would be required within the open space development unless another alternative is determined to be equivalent to meeting the town's housing needs. Uh, that's for you to determine after consultation with the, um, Westwood Housing Partnership and the Westwood Housing Authority. Uh, we did receive comments from them. Um, the Housing Partnership met earlier this evening, um, just before your meeting, so I, I think they're here tonight. Uh, we have our housing agent, Sarah Richard, who's here, who can provide an update, but you did, um, they were, I think, generally supportive and would recommend the applicant's proposal, which is, um, five units proposed in a group home with two units, so a total of seven. Two units proposed within the open space development, and they'd like to see and make sure that those, um, units within the development are evenly distributed, um, and they should be of equal quality, um, with the rest of the units. Um, the Housing Authority and Westwood, uh, Affordable Housing Associates, um, they were generally supportive, but they would like to see, um, the three units within the open space development and four units in the group home. Um, that was their request, so that's something for you to consider and think about tonight.
Sarah, did you want to add anything to this? So you did, you gave us a lot of good information at our last hearing, but I don't know if there's anything additional here. Okay, we'll go to questions then, um, and, or was there, how about the, um, WAHA or, um, the Affordable Housing Partnership? Did anyone want to speak to that?
I don't know if anyone's here. I don't know if they're here.
Okay. Then why don't we open it up to other, if other board members have questions, uh, directly of the applicant or, um, it's on, Brian, you have a little bit there, so I, or?
Uh, just, uh, a few comments just on the, the soccer field itself. Uh, so is the, when I, I just want to confirm, is that a regulation size? So it's the same size field that is, currently exists?
It is regulation size, but in order to fit the parking space? Is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
All right, it is a regulation-sized soccer field for 11V11. I've checked the FIFA regulations. It is slightly narrower and slightly shorter than it is today in order to accommodate the parking, but it still confor- conforms with that, and I will be reaching out to Parks and Rec to go over to make sure they still feel comfortable with it as well. But otherwise, the parking gets too tight to the field, and we were concerned there wasn't enough room for the teams to be safely away from the car and on the sidelines.
Okay. So you're gonna check with the Parks and Rec? I just want to make sure that they're adequate to have tournaments and such, so, um, they're legitimate?
Yes, no, I checked. I'm a soccer referee myself, so I'm familiar with the, the rules and the regulations, and so, but we will confirm with them to make sure that they're comfortable as well.
Yeah, I think if you could just have the, uh, if you just give us the dimensions and all after this, I think it's, we need 110 by 75 yards, I think is.
That's exactly right, and we're at, um, we're larger than that. It's bigger.
Okay.
And then as far as the density, uh, some of the other developments that he, you've done have, is it similar to, to this that I can do a site visit to?
Yeah, there's a, there's one that's actually, um, the same homes in Sudbury.
Right.
I encourage everyone to take a look if they want. It's called Dudley Brook Preserve, and the address is 40 Tall Pine Road in Sudbury. That's at the far end of Sudbury, out Route 20. I'll try to talk louder. Is that better? Sorry.
And then with, with regards to the, uh, to the sidewalks, I'd like to, to hear from the pedestrian biking safety. See, I know we have, in spirit of the complete streets, uh, to find out what their, um, their failing is on that.
I think, um, Mr. Olenoff, Steve Olenoff, is an associate member of the board. He might have something to report from the Ped Bike Committee or? Or not now? Are you?
Yeah, so, uh, I'm vice chair of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee. Westwood is a complete streets community. We adopt a complete streets, which means that, uh, we want every street in town. And this is, this is a street, uh, and we, because it needs, it's supposed to meet subdivision regulations. So every street in town should be a complete street, which means it needs to provide for bicycles and pedestrians. Not having any sidewalk, uh, certainly means it does not. And the Bicycle Pedestrian, uh, Committee is, is against any kind of street that doesn't have sidewalks. Now, in fact, the subdivision, division rules and regulations in section, uh, requires sidewalks on both sides of the street. And there is a provision, 5.8.11, which says that the planning board can waive the sidewalk on one side of the street if they either put that sidewalk somewhere else or they provide the money to build a, uh, the equal-length sidewalk somewhere else. And by the way, the money should be what it costs the town to create the sidewalk, uh, which may be different from what it costs the developer. It does not allow the planning board to waive the sidewalk on both sides of the street. That's not in here. So that would mean that, uh, in this case, there should be at least a sidewalk on one side of the street, and then the, uh, path that they have, uh, through, behind the development, that could serve as a replacement for the other sidewalk on the street. But to waive sidewalks, you just, there's no provision here for, when you put the way of both sidewalks.
Sure, yes.
So as the plan shows, um, we are doing a sidewalk. That's a five-foot sidewalk, the same way as it would be along the roadway, and it's providing the same connectivity. And the concept is that even these lots all have direct access. This is lot three, four, five, to that same sidewalk. But we're doing it in a safer way because it's much safer to bike away from the traffic or to walk away from the traffic. It's also much more visible from the soccer field, so that's a safety issue, too, that you can see your kids or other people can see your kids as they bike to the community and bike to their soccer games. And the last part is, I, I forgot to mention, there's a walkway that connects to the temple parking lot, so all the homes and Chase Estates can now come up and the kids can bike or walk right through directly to the soccer field without going on a main street. And so we're not asking for a waiver of subdivision regs, although this is a condominium, so definitive plans don't technically apply, but we're still providing. But we're still providing a sidewalk. It's just not a light on the street.
Well, and I think, here, what other board members think, but I think the issue is that we would require normally a sidewalk on both sides. We would -- the path satisfies one side, but Mr. Olenoff is saying that we can't waive. We just wouldn't have a new street in town that has no sidewalk at all, even though you've got the path, but that's not the same thing as a sidewalk. Abby, did you want to?
Frank, that's right. Or you could consider what you've done before in the past is if the applicant proposes, in lieu of providing a sidewalk, the amount of money it would have cost to construct that sidewalk along the road to be into the sidewalk fund.
That's what we were proposing, is we have the $60,000, but we'll obviously comply with what your requirements are on that.
But I think it's -- that would be for one side.
Yes, that would be for one side, but I think when you review the preliminary, you are comfortable with the meandering sidewalk. So it's really up for the board to discuss.
Want to discuss that or have other?
Along the same lines, as far as the -- for the neighbors that are coming to use the soccer field, can they come in through either entrance?
Yes, it's a two-way street. It's open.
Okay.
It's a private road, but open to public travel.
Sure. Yeah, because I was thinking during that time, too, you have large amount of traffic coming through, so I think it would be nice to have at least one sidewalk coming through. I don't know what the other board members feel.
Can you explain what happened in your thinking again? You might have touched on it from your last meeting when there was a meandering sidewalk on one side, and now we have none.
Yes. I mean, everybody's saying it's none, but in our mind, it still provides the same connectivity that's on the street, and all the homes have direct access to it.
So in your mind, the meandering sidewalk was simply replaced behind these sets of homes?
Right, because, one, to help the aesthetic of the community, because a five-foot-wide sidewalk, when you have only a 25-foot setback, is a large percentage of it, so it takes away from the curb appeal of the community. And we're providing direct access from the homes to that, and more importantly, from the neighborhood, because our residents aren't going to be using the soccer field, and that's the major part. Even the homes that -- even the homes that are on these new lots that we're creating all could access this walkway rather than create something on Winter Street, and that's how they could get to the field. We felt it was safer and more in keeping with what people wanted to do.
So are you saying also, then, that you wouldn't be doing the sidewalk on Winter Street, that the DPW was?
Well, we're making a contribution to -- for the town to use us as they want, if that's where they want to put it. I went to one of the hearings, and they weren't sure that -- I'm not sure what their conclusion is and what they want to do with sidewalks, if they want it on both sides or not. It wasn't clear at that hearing that that's what they wanted to do.
So I think the issue at hand with regards to the one sidewalk is if you live in one of these homes, you have to walk on the road in order to get to that sidewalk. And right now, as Mr. Olenoff indicated, when we build a new road, we want it to have a sidewalk, so those people who live on that road can directly access that sidewalk to get to wherever they're headed. So I think that's what the board is now wrestling with. And what you're saying is it's -- this is better, but we're saying, well, when they come out of their driveway, they don't have a sidewalk. They immediately go onto a road.
Correct. And the difference is, if this were a standard subdivision, I would 100% agree with you. But it's age-restricted, and in our experience, that's -- the sidewalks aren't used that way. Most people even drive to the post office to get their mail.
But as you -- our bylaws are written as such, and we can't just summarily dismiss them because you said so tonight. So we have to consider our bylaws and how they relate to your application. So I think that's what you're hearing from the board. We just -- we haven't had a developer come and say, "No sidewalks," because it's always been presumed they're going to put them on one side of the street, at least in recent history. So now you're asking for none, so we have to give.
Again, legally, we thought we were providing a way to do that with contributing the funds for one sidewalk, and then instead of having it along the street, that it went behind the homes, but every home still had access to it.
Don't get me wrong. I like that sidewalk there. I think that's fine, but it doesn't necessarily meet what our bylaws are stipulating, so we have to consider that.
But we'd love to talk with the peer reviewer about how we can meet those and still accomplish what we're looking for, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's your decision.
It's obviously ongoing, so yeah.
Yeah, I think we're -- I think it's clear where the consensus.
And we hear it clearly as well.
I had some other questions. Lot 1 and 2, they were somewhat oddly configured. Was that to get a minimum square footage?
Yes.
Comply?
That is a hazard of zoning. We still --
Abby, does that match our lot shape factor? Is that okay?
I believe it does, right?
It does.
Okay.
We checked that.
It hadn't been addressed, so I just wanted to.
Yep. No, everyone has -- we have a table.
Number 3 is odd as well, so.
Yes. Again, that's for the wellhead and making sure that that stays, but still giving people a backyard.
Secondly, the parking lot. You said the field is going to be deeded to the town as the parking lot as well?
Yes.
And that's proposed to be gravel, which means obviously the town will have to continue to maintain a gravel lot.
Correct.
And any meandering rocks that go into the field and into the grass has to be maintained in that way.
Well, there is an asphalt sidewalk that goes along it.
Okay. So it's an elevated sidewalk?
That's how we would do it, to keep the gravel off, just what you were saying.
Okay. And there's no plans to make the road public? Ever?
No plans to -- I mean, if the town wanted to take it, you wouldn't hurt my feelings, but no, we're going to be maintaining that and not asking for you to take it.
Are your communities typically governed by an HOA?
Yes. And it's a condominium, so it has teeth to it, so we can enforce the rules and regulations that you put on it.
You mentioned the meeting house would be private to the owners. I presume it's a key that they would be given as owners of the condo, or their condo keys would work for this?
We've done it with keys. We've done it with a code on the door pad. So the code's more people like that these days, because you don't have to have an extra set of keys with you. We do either.
Do you have any developments without sidewalks? And you may have mentioned this before, but all of them?
Everything we've done in the last 40 years.
You're nodding. Okay.
So that's -- we've built over 3,000 homes.
Can you describe for us in the audience what it would look like over these retention basins?
The underground ones?
Yes. Just grass or?
Well, it would be a combination of grass and shrubs. There's about -- Kurt, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, 18 inches of soil on top? 12 to 18, I think it is. And so it will accommodate shrubs. We can't put trees. And so we would revegetate. It'll be slightly mounded so that it'll feel rolling and not just a flat field. And the concept is to add some contours to that and make it feel natural, even though underneath is open drainage areas.
And the materials for the road would be asphalt or concrete?
Asphalt.
And so too with the driveways?
Yes.
Hydrant?
We met with the fire chief, and we modified the hydrant locations to satisfy his concerns.
And what about snow removal?
We are going to submit a plan for that. We've done it in the past. Because it's a condominium association, we have it to a higher standard. We actually have Bobcats that we rent for the season that will be stationed on-site. And so Bobcat's a small track machine with a small loader. And so we're able to go in and place the snow exactly where we want it.
And where would they be stored on-site?
So let me get to a better plan. Really, in the open spaces between homes, we'll pile it there. We've got areas here. There are bigger areas over here, and at the end, we can push it off into here. But there's plenty of space to do it between homes and along the roadway edge.
Yeah, I appreciate that information. I was actually referring to the Bobcats. You said.
Oh, where would we store those?
Yeah, it sounded like you said they'd be kept on-site during the winter months.
Yes.
Where?
And so we would take a parking space. A community of this size, I think it would only be one or two. So it would be in a guest parking space for that.
In the gravel lot?
No.
Where's the guest parking?
We have, I think it's 18 guest parking spaces, so we have seven here, four here, four here, four here.
So at least one of those would be occupied in the winter months by a Bobcat?
Correct.
Just one Bobcat for this length of road or more? I know you're not going to be there.
I haven't gotten into that level of detail, but we will provide it to you.
In other communities, how many do you keep?
I would say one.
Oh, you mentioned the turn in the road would be treated more like an intersection. Without sidewalks, and we have an intersection, is there anticipated to be a control of any kind at this intersection?
I think you're talking about the internal curve here.
Yes, I am. If that's going to be regarded as more of an intersection than a curved road.
I think it was a --
I'm just asking.
It was an intersection for turning radius standpoints. It's obviously a continuing road, and if you're going to require us to have a sidewalk on one side, it will be there.
Okay. I didn't say anything. I was just asking if it was going to be regarded as an intersection.
I think that was a terminology issue.
All right. Oh, do you have a name for the development?
We're looking for suggestions.
Okay. I didn't know what to call it in my head, so I just.
We've been referring to it as Westwood Lodge. We'd like to do something that refers to the history, but we're not quite sure of any yet.
Probably keep looking.
That's what we've been hearing as well.
New Westwood Lodge. No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Mike, you have anything?
You mentioned for trees going with white pines?
For the seedlings.
Yes.
But the trees that are on the buffer that we have on our plan are green giants.
Okay. The white pines, they don't grow very well. They grow very tall, but they lose all their lower limbs, and they're not very good for screening. So we recommend something other than white pines.
We will come up with something else.
Okay. The stockade fence?
Yes.
That Beto brought up. What is your plan for that?
To be replaced.
Completely replaced?
Completely replaced. It's really not savable. There are a few sections, but there are outside of the OSRD that look okay, but the ones that are there would be replaced.
Okay. You also -- now, the meeting house?
Yes.
That is a single-story with a basement?
Correct.
With angel ceilings?
Yes. Volume space in the ceilings, yeah.
Volume space in the ceilings. Room for storage in that basement? Is it?
That's primarily what it is. It's for storage, and then if the homeowners decide at a later date that they want to do something with that space, we've seen people do exercise equipment, dance class, things like that, or a secondary gathering space.
You mentioned you're going to incorporate artifacts of the existing Westwood Lodge, I take it?
Yes.
What do you envision those artifacts being?
So when we went before the Historic Commission, we did a walk with them, and they found there are some corner cabinets. I call it the -- I think they call it the addiction facility. It's closest to Colby Way. And there were some corner cabinets that seemed to be from the 1800s. We're going to try and save those. There was some -- there was a nul post in the main building and a mantel in the main building. We would put those in as well. The corner cabinets would go in the bathrooms. They asked if perhaps we could find two good doors to salvage to put as the bathroom doors. And then there are a few people who have offered memorabilia, so we might do something like that, framing it and putting it in the main space. And the mantel would be in the fireplace in the main part of the meeting house.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, thank you. I'd like to invite public comment if there are residents who'd like to come up and ask questions. I just ask you to come to the podium, identify your name, your address, and thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Kate Nguyen, 10 Cedar Hill Drive. So it's a great opportunity to see all these pictures. That's really helpful. I did want to come back to just a couple of points that were mentioned. I do expect, I hope, I think a lot of us hope, that our residents will be using the soccer field. We have a lot of grandparents in town with grandchildren who play and will be there, so I would love to see those sidewalks. I'm curious where mailboxes will be for these residents, if they need to walk to get their mail.
I think they're in the meeting house, correct? Yeah.
Right. So they need to be able to get there in the winter to get their mail. So and people have touched on this. It would be great if there was a sidewalk. Additionally, about the meeting house, if it is for residents, I just want to make sure that it is equally accessible for the affordable residents, that there's no difference in access, which would be great. Also, the meandering sidewalk, which is a nice add, it would be great to keep it no matter what you do with another sidewalk. I am concerned about lighting for that. We use our sidewalks all the time in this town, not just during the day, and going through other people's yards at dusk or dawn is concerning to me. What else? I took a bunch of notes. Oh, my other question about the meandering sidewalk is, and maybe someone touched on this, in the offseason, not the soccer season, how would that be kept clear? And how frequently, if the intention is for local residents to be using it for access? And I think those are my only questions. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, thanks.
So with the sidewalk, we would be clearing it. If the sidewalk on the rear is required, is the one sidewalk, if that's what the board determines is okay, we would clear it. We would plow it. The condo association would be responsible for it. And we would also, if it's on the street, the same thing. We had not anticipated lighting it for exactly the same reasons. You said it's in the backyards, it's going through the woods. It would be ADA, though, accessible, so that there's no issue with the ability for everybody to use it. The meeting house is open to all residents. The affordable homes, the only person, people that know about that are those who are administering the lottery. It's not going to be a known thing, and so everyone will be treated the same.
While we're on the subject of the affordable housing, the proposals of where they -- you would like to put them?
Yes.
I just want to touch, they need to be more evenly distributed throughout the project, not clumped.
We're happy to do that. We didn't view it as clumped, but I understand the concern, and we will do that. It is important to us, though, the group home, and the folks from the group home are here. Their funding requires them to have it be five, a five-unit group home.
I understand that aspect of.
Perfect. But yes, we will move it, and we will work with the Housing Office to -- or is it Housing Office, Housing Authority? I'm not sure which it is.
The Fair Housing Authority.
We will make sure that it complies, and we will pick different homes so that they're more spread out.
Thank you.
With regard to the affordable, I'm looking at a picture of what you submitted, and I see three arrows showing houses in the open space as being, but that gives us eight with the five in the group, but I heard seven as the number.
Yes, so the way it was worded was that if the group home is approved for five by the state, the -- I don't know, is it DHCD, I think, certifies them, and they get on to the housing supply, that we would do two within our community. If only four were approved by the state, then we would do three within the OSRD. And we're now going to be changing the locations of those based upon the feedback we just got.
So I think, and this is overtaken by the group home, what's the name of the company again?
Life Works. So they're already based here in Westwood.
And you said they're already committed to a five-unit facility?
That's my understanding, but we can ask them directly. I don't want to speak too much for them.
No, I understand, but you understand, if we're working with two different entities, and if they all of a sudden drop to four, and you're at two, we're not as happy as we could have been.
We're going to make it so that you have seven.
Okay. And as I understand it, all of those units, none of them can be bedrooms or units for, like, a live-in aid. It must be all residents for the intended purpose of the home, so.
The inside's going to be the same for our market rates as well?
No, I meant with the group home.
Oh, with the group home?
Yeah. And that's a different company, I understand.
My understanding is they're complying with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any additional comments? Yes?
Hi, Marge.
We will listen to this. Excuse me, sorry. But I know we have two very important issues tonight, so I ask everyone to please be patient because we will get to the patient, because we will get to the second issue, but I'd like to hear what these residents have to say.
48 Clappor Tree Street. So I just had a couple of questions with the traffic. I wanted to know if a traffic study was actually done? It was? Terrific. And I heard the gentleman from Beta, if I heard him correctly, say that the drives are going to be in the same locations as they presently are? Did I hear that correctly? Because I thought that they were being moved.
So they're in the same locations?
The one on Clappor Tree Street is slightly askew.
The one on Clappor Tree is slightly askew from the previous location?
Yes. I think it's 15 feet.
15 feet.
Towards Pond?
Towards Pond.
Okay. And the width, are they going to be what they are now, or are they going to be wider?
22 foot right of way is required.
He said it's a 22-foot right of way is required.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Ernun, 59 Colby Way. I spoke at the meeting in December about the fence, and it's come up a few times, the fence that's in disrepair and planned to be replaced. Tonight, for sake of brevity, I'm speaking on behalf of 10 families that are in the abutting neighborhood on Colby Way and Sherman's Way, and just wanted to keep you all informed that we have retained counsel and are working directly with the Green Company over that property line and the location of the fence. We've had constructive conversations, but as of tonight, there's no resolution, no paperwork's been filed, so there will be an ongoing discussion with our council and the Green Company over where that property line is. Is there any question that I can answer at this time on that?
It sounds like that means the fence is on your properties?
The fence was actually set back, sorry. For context, the fence, when it was put in over 20 years ago by the lodge, was set back into the lodge property by 20 years, by 20 feet. In the ensuing years, many of the town members that have property lines there made improvements too and utilized that land as if it were their own, so if you walked into any of their backyards, you would think it was there. So that's the question of the fence as it currently stands, and a lot of the OSRD zoning areas are not perfectly aligned since the fence is set back into the lodge property. So this is, again, ongoing discussions with our council and the Green Company.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Mall in 126 Pond. Just one comment and then one question. The comment is on the gravel for the parking. I think that's actually a very bad idea. My daughter plays soccer there every Sunday. There's typically two-year-olds, four-year-olds, six-year-olds running around that area. I just think about, you know, rocks, and I think about the dust. This is supposed to be a soccer field. I don't quite know why, besides cost, why we'd put gravel there. So I think that's a very bad idea for the safety of the children, and kind of the intent of having an open space. So that's my one comment. And my question would be for the developer, I know this is still a process you're going through, is do you have a sense for how long, you know, obviously there's the field, but if it's all under construction, it's hard to get access to it. Do you have a sense for once you begin construction, how fast, you know, you can get the road and parking up and running? Ballpark, ballpark. Fun question.
Yep. If you can.
I'm pretty confident the spring season will go fine, and that the fall season, we will not be able to accommodate because of the construction going on and the safety issues, and that hopefully it will be ready for the springtime, if it goes according to plan. Springtime of '20.
Steve Olunoff, 52 Glendora Road. Last time I mentioned about the A&R lots, and it got you kind of confused, and I had forgotten about a vision that if the exterior lots are separate and done with the A&R, then that means you get these weird-shaped lots that you have, and you don't have control over what happens to the back of the lots. And now it's even worse, because you have a sidewalk running through people's backyards, and so, you know, how do you work that all out? I think it'd be much better if you do include those lots, then you can make them smaller. You can make them the correct size, so that people have their own lots without a sidewalk running through the back of them. It's a better way of doing that. I was mistaken, because you cannot change the frontage that's required, and the planning board cannot waive that, and that's where I got you confused last time. But on the plan, again, on those fences you didn't show, if you're moving the fences with the neighbors and whatnot, or changing any property, that needs to be shown right now. None of that's shown. You're not clear on where the driveways are. Before, the driveways from an A&R lot to the street, the planning board doesn't have any control over that, but now you're bringing those sidewalks from exterior lots into your development, and they're not specified where they are. You need to really show that on the plans, where those driveways are going to be. On the soccer field, so it's going to be in perpetuity for the town can use it, I'm concerned about exactly what that is. We should have our town council review that to make absolutely sure that whatever provision is in there is actually in perpetuity, so make sure that that happens. And again, I'm concerned, oh, the traffic study, did you cover the size of the parking lot? Do you have enough cars there? Because there's a temple nearby, people park sometimes in there, and I've been told that people that are parking at the soccer field, if there's an overflow, they go over to the temple. There's no problem there, but we need to know, you know, is that parking lot going to be the right size? And even for the guests, there's not, I don't think that's many scattered throughout the property. It's a long ways from a lot of homes to get to any of those guests' parking routes. And finally, one of your waivers is asking for a complete waiver of Section 5. I've been on the planning, I was on the planning board for 27 years. No one asks, ever asked for a waiver of an entire section of the zoning bylaw. You put up a chart that showed what some of the changes are, fine, ask for those individual changes. But there's no way the planning board could waive an entire, this is an important section in here, a lot of specifications in there, and if you want to vary your specifications from what the town requires for its railways, then you can ask individually for each waiver that you had listed there.
Thank you. Abby, are there some things that you have notes on that we need to provide guidance tonight on? Because typically what we'll do now is we would continue this hearing to a future date, give them time to respond to the questions that have been asked here, and work out the details, but are there things you need, that we need to vote on?
Yes, I think you should at least weigh in on the affordability proposal. The sidewalks, we've touched on that, so it sounds like the planning board would like to see an additional sidewalk along the road. Community, the facility, the meeting room space, that the zoning bylaw leaves a community facility to be determined by you, the planning board, if it appropriately designed to serve the recreational and social needs of the residents. The gravel parking lot, you should probably weigh in on. And then we have some of those, the waivers. If you want to go through now or after...
Let me take the waivers. Was there an additional quick comment that you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you. I'm Matthew Watzke, 65 Mayfair Drive. I spoke in the preliminary meeting on behalf of concerns by Temple Beth David, both in support of the project generally, but to express some concerns. Say that the developer has added one very sketchy detail to the plan that I think needs to be played out in a good bit more detail, so that the temple has a level of comfort about what's going on, and I'll refer to the plans and look at this one, and then I'll ask that we turn to Sheet C-4.1. But first, in this one, so you have, the temple property is up in this area here, and the developer's talking about having a pathway, which we actually suggested to connect from the parking lot for the soccer field, to go across the single-family house lots that are, appears that are sort of called, I would call them the rat tails to the single-family house lots, to get to the temple parking lot and continue a pathway along. If we could turn to Sheet 4.1, is it possible to put that up?
Is it on there? Oh, I think I have it.
I'm not sure which sheet out of 19 that is.
Let's see, on the site plan? Nope. Let's see, in the site plans, I think? Was it in this?
That's three.
Back one more? Oh, yeah, let me zoom in. How do I zoom in? Is this the right one?
Yeah. That's it. Is there any way to enlarge that text?
Nope. Where is it? Where is it?
Right here?
Oh, we're here.
Yeah. All right. I can just go ahead and provide the comment. We'll get into more details. I'm sure the Green Company is intending to be much more detailed than this is anyway. There we go. All right. So as Steve Olunoff mentioned in the preliminary meeting, I thought it was a great idea that if lots one and two, perhaps the other lots as well, were included in the OSRD, then the lot sizes and the lot shape factors and all that could be disregarded essentially, included in the OSRD, and you have much more flexibility in what shape and size lots you have. The temple, this is Temple Road, that's basically our driveway, and then we have head-in parking in this area, and then more head-in parking all along here. In the current conditions, existing conditions, it is very common for soccer families that are using the soccer field to walk along the sidewalk and park their cars in this area. We often have overflow. And when we expressed our concerns and our suggestion that we put in a pathway between the temple parking lot and the new proposed soccer field, it was, let's call it a win-win. There are times when the temple has events where we have overflow parking needs, and we would like to have access here, and there's also sometimes overflow from the soccer field, and people are looking for parking here. But what we're hoping could happen is that we have a much more detailed plan of a pathway in here, and this is a connecting walkway and common driveway to be dimensioned and located in the field. This is just my personal opinion. I haven't had an opportunity to take this to the board, but I think it's a really bad idea to have a connecting common driveway going from the temple road through our parking and to connect to here in a loop. That's just a traffic nightmare, I think. What I was expecting we would see, and I proposed this to Green Company's council, is to have some access off of our parking area here into this area, and use this space as area that could be improved as additional, perhaps gravel surface parking, so that it doesn't have a stormwater effect, and that would provide additional overflow parking, both for the soccer folks, but also provide a direct connection to the temple and its parking lot for the events when we have overflow. Because there are times when we have a major event, and we already have, with a longstanding agreement with Westwood Lodge, we've had Westwood Lodge have opportunities to use our space, and during larger events at the temple, we've had access to their parking lot, so that if we're having multiple events going on, or one shift ending and another one starting, people can park here and just walk over. To be able to use a pathway would be great, but a driveway, I think, is a bad idea, and I'd love to see some details in here for how parking would work. And then finally, there's this fence, that's the existing fence, and unlike the other plans that are up that show green space and details for where trees and shrubs would be planted, this is the longest single property line that the Westwood Lodge property has with the proposed development that's with another neighbor, and there's zero details in here about how that area would get landscaped. So we'd like to see that, rather than saying it's an A&R lot and it's not part of the OSRD. I'd say particularly where the temple is saying, we welcome the idea of having the group home put on Lot 1 adjacent to our property. We'd just like to see the thought process of how that area would get landscaped, and how the common drive, the parking, can be provided.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I think we could do that at the next, you could provide some more about the next meeting.
Make them feel at ease, there's no through driveway.
No through driveway? Okay.
Two seconds.
Okay.
We are not proposing a through driveway, and when I spoke at the beginning about wanting access to Clappor Tree Street for Lot 1, that's so that there is no common driveway between one and two. Lot 2 will go to our internal drive, but Lot 1 would go out. Five-foot walkway between the temple parking lot and the roadway by the soccer field for connectivity, just as you asked. We heard what he said when he met with our attorney, and we're working with them, and we'll address landscaping concerns, too.
Okay. So we're looking at, to go through some of these waivers, I think the first three, just to reiterate, we already talked about these at the last meeting, but it was to only locate trees on the drawings that are 24-inch. We're okay with that. It's just like, do we really need to clutter up the drawing with all the trees? And I think we were fine with that. Waiving the open space requirement isn't necessary for the soccer field, because it's, soccer field's not open space, so we're good with that. The presentation model is hardly ever something we really need. So those were waivers that we already agreed to. Then I think these additional things here, Abby, what do we need to provide on this?
I think you should weigh in, especially on like the sidewalk and curb and type. Usually you always require granite curbing.
So we want to require the sidewalk, I think. Yes. Yes. Granite.
Mr. Trump, can I make a suggestion, which is that you take a look at one of their communities, which operate with no sidewalks, before you make that final decision? Just a suggestion. I know this is a project, it's not something that we have in most of the programs, and it's kind of not notes in the concept, but that's a suggestion I would make.
I think we can think about that. Abby, what else?
I mean, generally, I'd recommend...
The affordable housing. We need to address the affordable housing. So is the question whether we support, we want seven units, clearly, whether it's four and three, or?
Five and two.
Five and two.
Yeah. Five and two, that's what the proposal is.
Five and two is what the proposal is. I think the Housing Authority wanted four and three, right?
Four and three, right. So if you were leaning towards the five in the group home and the two in the site, you would want, as you move along, that would be a requirement of this special permit. You would require that as a condition, there would be a deed restriction, it would be in perpetuity. So you'd want to make sure you have that binding going forward, that you'd be getting a total of seven units to be added to the subsidized housing inventory. I think that's the important part that you're looking for, the seven total units.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Then I think, unless there's something else...
I guess just general consistency with your subdivision rules, like some of those construction details, I think?
Yeah, we need to review the other, the extensive list of waivers there. I would be concerned about waiving a whole section of the bylaw, so review that.
Spell that out.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you motion?
So I make a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, April 2nd, at 7:00 PM.
Oh, what about, is that okay? To, yep, Attherson?
Attherson Middle School in the cafeteria, 850 High Street. Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that hearing is continued, Tuesday, April 2nd, at Thurston Middle School in the cafeteria.
Can you hear about the recap?
Cease the next, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you very much. We'll give a moment to clear the room.
All right.
So the next item on the agenda, we will be, is a public hearing on the town meeting articles, which includes all the articles that the planning board is proposing for town meeting, and we will observe that Mr. Gorman and... And we will observe that Mr. Gorman and Mr. Pfaff were not able to attend the last public hearing. If we could please, we're going to get through this, so please.
Give him a second.
We have signed the...
Yes, I watched and signed it.
I watched and signed as well.
They're just attesting that they watched the hearing on television and signed a form which allows that we've all participated in this process, so. So the first, let's just get right to it. The first item of concern was the medical uses article, and I asked, following our last public hearing, there were a number of questions were raised, a number of concerns, and I asked our town councilor to research some legal issues. He prepared a memorandum. Is Mr. Bailey here? So...
Oh, yeah, I think I see him in the hut, he's coming in.
I think...
He's in the hallway.
He's in the hallway. Mr. Bailey, can you please join us in here?
Wait, he's over there.
Oh, there he is.
So I asked, I asked for a legal opinion because a number of questions had come up about substance abuse rehab treatment facilities and exactly what the issues were in terms of, we heard a lot of argument that... Sorry, are you recording this meeting? You need to make, you need to identify yourself that you're recording the meeting so that everyone knows it's being recorded.
It's a public meeting.
It's a requirement of public meeting law. That's okay, you've done it now, basically, so. So Mr. Bailey, I asked...
I live in this neighborhood.
Yes.
That's going to be affected by the drug rehab, that's going to lower the property value.
Sir, we'll get to all of that. We will get to all of that. First thing I want to do is establish a common basis of facts, because I know there's been a lot of misinformation. Excuse me, ma'am, will you please allow me to finish? Absolutely, he does have the right to record it, he's recording it. Everyone wants to record it. It's being broadcast live on YouTube right now, so we're all going to have this discussion in public. This is actually a great thing that we have so much attention on this issue now. We're going to get to the bottom of it, but there are a number of facts that I would like to establish so that we are all operating from the same page. And I asked Mr. Bailey to research some of this, if you'd like to give us a quick report on that and allow us to ask questions. Thank you.
Can we just have Mr. Bailey to identify, like, what is, what is here?
Yes.
I will, I will do all of that, okay? Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? As Mr. Atkins said, my name's Dan Bailey. I am a real estate and land use attorney in Boston with the firm of Pierce Atwood. Pierce Atwood is a regional firm with offices throughout New England. I've worked as a land use and real estate lawyer for over 30 years. Two weeks ago, I was asked by the Board of Selectmen to serve as interim town council. I accepted. The Tom McCusker, who's been our town council for 44 years, retired at the end of the year. The Board of Selectmen began a process to identify new town council, and that process is ongoing. And with the process coming to town, you know, coming up to town meeting, they wanted someone in the role of interim town council to advise the planning board, advise the Finance Commission, advise the Board of Selectmen as we started to move towards town meeting. My expertise, again, is in real estate municipal and land use law. I have worked for the select board and the planning board in Westwood for over 20 years as special town council on various matters, going all the way back. Some people, maybe not from this site neighborhood, will remember it, but going back to when the town of Norwood sought to use Buckmaster Pond for a drinking water supply. We defeated that over 20 years ago. I've also worked on the acquisition of Lowell Woods. I've worked on Westwood Station. I've worked on University Station. That's generally what I'm most known for, because that's when I appear at town meeting. I've worked on the police station redevelopment, and most recently, I've worked on the Islington Center redevelopment. So I've worked with the town for a long time. I know everybody at Town Hall. I've worked with the planning board for a long time, and Nora and I go way back to when we both served on the Conservation Commission before either of us had any of these roles in town. I was asked by the planning board to explain the legal issues that they have to address in connection with uses like sober homes, drug rehabilitation treatment facilities, hospitals, and other uses that have potentially protected status. And I'm going to take a step back and talk about one area of protected status that most people are generally familiar with, and that's adult uses. Adult uses, pornographic uses, are allowed by the Constitution. It's not a local exemption, it's a constitutional level exemption. And the common advice for any municipality that wants to protect itself against those uses is that you need to allow those uses someplace where they're very unlikely to occur, okay? That's just what this town has done. Adult uses are down at University Station, part of the university development. The town of Natick, their adult uses are at the Natick Mall. So if you don't do that, you are exposed to potential adult uses anywhere in town. A similar principle applies to drug rehab facilities, okay? So Mr. Atkins asked me four questions when I'm done. And I'll say this right now to save Mr. Atkins from it. This is a public meeting. The way public meetings are run is all questions come through the chair.
Also, just, and people came in a little bit late, but we will have Mr. Bailey's presentation, and we'll have some staff comments, and board members will discuss, and then we'll take a lot of public comment after that, but just so that we know the sequence of things, that that's what we're doing.
So Mr. Atkins asked me to comment on four items. The first one is can a town prohibit substance abuse rehab facilities and hospitals? The second is if a town cannot prohibit such facilities, what can it do to regulate those uses? The third is how would an application for a substance abuse rehab facility be handled in Westwood under current law? And he also asked me to comment on the treatment of sober houses. So let me take them one at a time, which is the first question, prohibit substance abuse rehab facilities. A lot of things in the law agree, this one isn't. The answer is no. This town cannot prohibit substance abuse rehab facilities, blanket exclusion under its zoning. It can't. It can't under federal fair housing law, it can't under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it can't under even Massachusetts zoning law, which has a very express prohibition on any discrimination against persons with disabilities. This has been, this issue has come up quite commonly in recent years. There are a number of cases on point, and there are a couple of free attorney, the Attorney General has to provide an opinion anytime a town passes a zoning bylaw. And so there are a few Attorney General's opinions, one in 2017, one in 2018, that talk about this specific issue. When the town of, I think Wilmington, put in place some regulations to try and regulate this use, the Attorney General found that those regulations were reasonable, and that they could indeed require a site plan review, a special permit, and certain other conditions to these types of facilities. So what can a town do? As I mentioned before, most of the law on this until recent years centers around adult uses. And the convention is to allow that use in a location where it is either very unlikely to occur, or you have a very good set of controls in place to regulate it. You require a special permit, you have safety standards, you have, you know, traffic standards, the usual things that a planning board or a zoning board of appeals would do. Drug treatment facilities can be confined to certain areas of town. That is exactly what the planning board and planning staff have tried to do here, okay, is to identify an area where these facilities... Excuse me. Identify an area where these facilities are very unlikely to occur, because they're already built. Now, I was also asked about hospitals. Hospitals, I don't think anybody's really here because they're interested in hospitals, but I was asked the question, I think the town probably could prohibit a full-scale hospital, because a hospital in and of itself isn't a use for disabled persons, there's no discrimination there. So if someone were to come in and apply in the town of Westwood for a drug rehab facility, how would they do so? Well, under our current law, they could go anywhere in town, they would submit an application for a building permit to the building inspector, who would deny it, almost certainly, on the basis that there's nothing in the zoning bylaw that says it's allowed. The applicant would then have the right to appeal that to the zoning board of appeals, which is a three-member board that sits to hear zoning appeals. That three-member board would then receive large legal briefs, and there are a couple lawyers on that board, and they would make a decision about whether that use is allowed or not. If the zoning board decided to support the building inspector, then they would deny the building permit application. If they decided that the building inspector was wrong, they would direct the building inspector to issue the building permit. Under either set of circumstances, there would be a right to appeal that decision by the zoning board to either the Superior Court in Norfolk County or to the Land Court in Boston. So just play it out a little bit. The building inspector denies the permit, the zoning board of appeals affirms the building inspector, the applicant will then take the case in all likelihood to the Land Court in Boston, where they will make all of the arguments regarding disability, fair housing, zoning exemption, that are typically made in connection with these types of applications. The last thing I want to mention, because Mr. Atkins asked me to mention it, is group homes. You know, all of these things sort of fall in a continuum in terms of the level of regulation that a community can impose. A community can impose the least amount of regulation on a group home or a sober home. In Westwood, we have a process of site plan review for group homes, typically for disabled adults. That exact same process would apply to a sober house. So an application would be made to the planning board, there'd be review to make sure that there's adequate parking, adequate lighting, you know, fairly typical things, but that particular use could not be prohibited. And I guess that's what I have to say, but Dave, I'm happy to take, I suppose, questions from you folks.
Are there any board member questions? I think Abby, I'd like to hear, because so we went back and we, as, thank you, Mr. Bailey. As you had indicated when we voted on this the last time, at least I was guided by the idea of it could never happen here sort of approach. And I think we researched this some more, and Abby, you want to present what our options might, first of all, what our options are in this.
Right, so you, just to go back a little bit, you had brought this article forward in 2017, but ultimately wasn't approved by the Attorney General, so you resubmitted it for this upcoming annual town meeting in May. At your public hearing on February 26th, you were unable to come to a conclusion on how to move forward after the comments that you received at your February 26th meeting. You did the Finance and War Commission, they began their hearings last week and have asked to hear from you after your meeting tonight. So your options to move forward with this town meeting, you can either approve the article, you know, you can vote to recommend the article, the article go forward as originally written and committed, or you can withdraw the article completely, or you could revise the language. It would still have to be within the scope of the original public hearing notice, but you could revise it and submit revised language to town meeting and to the Finance and War Commission. So my recommendation at this time would be to submit a revised article that removes the hospital and treatment facility use, since you weren't able to come to a conclusion at your February 26th meeting, but you should still continue to study that and look at where you would want to allow those uses, because as you heard from Dan, if you don't include the hospital treatment facility uses in your zoning bylaw, you are at risk, the whole town is at risk for one of these uses to be proposed in an undesirable location or even a residential district. But you, within the scope of the public hearing notice, you could revise the article to at least include the definition for medical center or medical clinic in the table of uses. You have the office of healthcare professional, and the medical center or clinic is currently in your zoning bylaw in the definitions, but the medical center use, which is essentially a higher intensity use, it's defined in your zoning bylaw as a higher intensity use than a doctor's office, where a patient can actually be treated, receive treatment, but not overnight stays. However, in your current table of uses, it does not say where those uses can and cannot go. So my recommended motion would change, my recommendation to you is to include that in the table of uses, to propose it to be allowed by special permit only in the two industrial zoning districts. I think that's still within the scope of your public hearing notice for this town meeting, but then you could, that would give you more time to look at those other uses and how you want to move forward at future town meeting.
So it's to take, it's to take substance abuse rehab center out of the article entirely, and to indicate for medical center or clinic that that use would not be permitted in any of the, in the ARO, or it's only in the industrial, which is where the current medical center is?
Industrial office, too.
Industrial office and industrial, so that's, what's reflected in the bottom row there is that this defining a medical center or clinic, because other definitions of that, other possibilities would be like a urgent care place, right?
Yes, like urgent care or, yeah, some kind of dermatology office where they might be doing skin appointments, kind of removal, but it doesn't require a long-term stay.
So what I would like to do here is I would like to get the other board members' feedback. I've read a lot of this material before the meeting as well, just get some initial feedback. And then we go to some public comment, and you can go from there, some work. Abby, what were you? Yeah, that's the public comment I wanted to do, some additional facts I wanted to just before we get to the public comment.
Yeah, I reviewed the revision, Abby, and I agree with, in general, with what we're stating here, we're moving it from the ARO, which is where Matt Attick is, as stated here. And of course, continue the discussion.
I just got a quick question. If you keep the 4.1.5.22, what says, "also healthcare professional," before it excluded substance abuse facilities, if you don't put that in there, does that still open it up then?
Yes, you are still, without having a clear definition or regulating where a treatment facility can go, you are, the whole town is still at risk of one being proposed, so I would really recommend you would include it, but it didn't sound like the board was going in that direction based on your earlier public hearings. So we would recommend you still consider that, it sounded like the ARO zone was not supported, that was part of the original article. So you would have to either relocate it to another zone, or look at more changes that extend beyond the scope of this original notice. You're not completely protected, actually, you're not protected from prohibiting treatment centers.
If we put it in another zone, we are.
Yes.
So it would be potentially important for the adults?
That, no, that's beyond the scope, because the adult overlay district is, exists on the zoning map. It's an overlay district on a map, it's not included as a base, underlying zoning district, that's not included in your table of uses.
If we wanted, if that's, if that were the solution, we would need to do it at a future town meeting, we would not be able to include it.
Right, because I think you would need to have more substantial, a different article that probably involves a zoning map and that.
So the way I see it is that we, we wrote it down in our, as we, so officially, we find a new location, which is, ultimately.
Yes, I think ultimately, we want the planning board to find a location that you could all support, report.
So as I understand what you're going to go through, we have three things really on the table, so to speak, hospital, rehab facility, and then the center. What you're proposing is we take off hospital and rehab facility, table that discussion, leave... leave us exactly as we are now, but include medical center or clinic to be zoned in industrial or industrial office, heard by a special permit by the ZBA. If someone should come to town for a medical center or clinic, then we have designated a place for that. But because of all interest and concerns, we are going to continue to look at our zoning, identify if we need to rezone locations, or see if we see alternative zones that currently exist, that the board hasn't explored yet, before our next town meeting, which could be in the fall of 19 or the spring of 20. That's your proposal, right?
Any other, Mike, do you have any thoughts, or?
Like I've said going forward, I, I support this article as written. I understand the blowback from that. Again, this board didn't know they were in a fight until two weeks ago. We've had probably five hearings on this very article.
People didn't know.
Excuse me.
Respect the process.
Excuse me, people. This, no, this is a public hearing, it doesn't give you the right to influence this here.
We will have order.
You'll be asked to leave.
So, we are trying to work through this issue tonight. We have a ton of people here. We've had testimony from some of the residents in this room came to speak on this issue two years ago.
Absolutely.
So now, I'd like to move to public comment, but first, I would like to read, we received a letter from the CEO of Meditech, because there's been a number of inaccurate statements made in public about this issue, and I just wanted to, you can get a copy of the letter back there, but a couple of things to point out that, I'm just, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but from the CEO of Meditech saying, "I want to make it clear that prior to last week's planning board meeting, no one at Meditech asked for this change, or ever had any discussion with planning board members, or any of the board of selectmen on the subject. Meditech provides software to the medical community, and the service is necessary to support that software. We do not now and can't imagine any circumstance under which we would be providing clinical services, covered by the changes in use in this article. We do rent out some space at our Lauterbrook Building, but it also can't envision ever allowing its use for clinical purposes. We have never been approached by any entity desiring to provide clinical services. While we cannot make any guarantees for the future, neither property is for sale, nor do we contemplate selling either property in the foreseeable future." I just, I know that a lot of people already saw this, but I just want to make it clear that there was not a, an idea of, well, it speaks for itself. So I'd like to, at this point, invite public comment, and I would remind of our procedures that we will, we want people to have an opportunity to be heard, but repetitive or off-topic comments will not be considered, and that off-topic would include sort of general questions about the procedure and whatnot, or how we got here. I really want to, tonight, let's talk about this issue, and we'll figure out as a board what we do about it. And if you could state your name and address.
May I finish my thoughts?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. As I've said, I support this article as written. I see that there is some dissent, and we are very close to the hour. I find out, a week before we're supposed to go, before the FinCon, with recommendations that we have some dissension. That's fine, but this, I think we're rushing this process, and I do not support, I support this article as written, but I will go along with, excuse me. With number four, to remove the hospital and substance rehabilitation, rehabilitation treatment facilities, the definitions, remove the use from the table of uses portion of the article, which would leave in there the medical center and clinic and office of healthcare professional to be placed in the, excuse me, industrial, industrial and industrial office districts. But moving forward, we need to revisit hospitals, substance rehabilitation, and treatment facility. And again, the same thing is going to arise, we're going to have to find a district to place in it. And, you know, people suggest, oh, let's just put it in this zone, let's put it in that zone. That's reactionary planning. Our job is smart planning, and we can't just throw it in another district just to appease people. So, I want to slow this process down. I recommend number four, as I've stated, moving forward, but after this town meeting, we're going to have to get together and we're going to have to figure out where this goes. And it doesn't mean my mind's going to change, or anyone else's mind is going to change, but we have to come up with a smart district to put this in, and protect this town going forward. That's our job. Thank you.
My name's Mike Dewan, I live at 167 Carroll, about six doors down from the Meditech building. If I could try to instill a little bit of calmness among both sides, I actually very much empathize for what you guys are going through. Although I live six doors down, and of course, am not happy with the thought of it, I think you guys are trying, in your heart of hearts, to do what's right. The commonsensical thing that a lot of us feel on our side is there's just been plans to redo all of Islington downtown center. People are going to have to take a bus a lot of times to get there. There's a private golf course across the street from this place, and it's in a neighborhood that a bunch of kids then walk to to school. That is everyone's point of concern. You trying to protect the community, no one's going to argue that you protecting the community. And thank you to the lawyer who gave us the education on what exactly this means, because that helps clear up a lot. So you're right, we do need to work together, and that's what everyone, everyone now thinks they have a Google degree in city planning. So, that being said, if we're picking a Meditech building, why aren't we picking the Meditech Greens building? And also, I just want to make the board aware, Stewart Healthcare, which is located on, right off Route 1, behind the Shell Station, it's called, wait, that's, thank you. Stewart Healthcare just moved their entire corporate offices to Dallas, Texas. That is, from a footprint standpoint, it's longer, but from a office-based standpoint, it's probably about the same size. That's off Route 1, down a cul-de-sac, that's removed from a lot of places, easy access off Route 1. Again, I just don't, I think what everyone wants to know is why wouldn't buildings like that be a better option as opposed to all the reasons I just stated before? So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to address your comment about picking a Meditech building. We're not picking a building initially when we cited ARO. We can't delineate between ARO East Street and ARO High Street, and the other larger facility by Fox Hill. It is simply ARO. So it would be up to whatever building became available, someone could move in there. Now, if we rezoned, then possibly we could rezone, ARO 1 is High Street, and ARO 2 is East Street, or something along those lines. But we can't, as it sits right now, just say, "You can move into ARO, but not this one. You can only go to that one." We can't do that.
So forgive my ignorance, how can you do it on that work?
It's about zoning, and what the zone was. What you're referring to, per wall, is that's the industrial office, I believe, and that's where we're recommending, at least Abby's recommendation, is where the medical center or clinics would be allowed. In the industrial, which is University Ave, or industrial office, which is that area behind the old Audi dealership off of Route 1. And what Abby is suggesting is that we pull the rehab facility discussion and the hospital discussion off the table, so the town stays where it is, we're not denying their admittance into the town, we can't, as Mr. Bailey illustrated to us, we can't do that. But what we're saying is, what Abby's suggestion is, we're not going to put it in ARO right now. We have to review this. And that's what we're talking about right now, is what do we do with these three things? Hospital, rehab facility, and medical center and clinics. So, the point of contention seems, from our perspective, we're hearing, is hospital, which may, maybe no one's contesting that at all, but the rehab facility. So Abby's suggestion is, let's pull that from the table, but let's protect ourselves on the medical center and clinic, so we know where those are going. That's, I just wanted to address your point of, we can't just say, "Go to 109, Meditech", because that's not allowed.
No, 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 to your point, I think.
Can you go back to the?
I'm sorry, you don't have a microphone, I'm sorry.
Thank you for explaining that further. I don't want to speak for everyone, because there very well could be people who have a hot button about hospital. I also don't know if hospital means surgery center, because that might be a good idea. But I, maybe by a show of hands, it's drug treatment facility? Who's non-drug treatment facility? Who's hospital? Who's against a hospital? Okay, so it's drug treatment facility.
So our feeling was fairly accurate, that it was the rehab facility.
Right. And so, yeah, back to your point, working together to protect the town, but I think just away from a school and a town center, I think would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll try to be quick. Frank Jurzak, 33 Magalete Drive. Thank you for putting together these materials in advance of the meeting, it was very helpful. I think for the folks in Islington who have gotten really involved in this, we're learning a lot about this process, even just through this issue, and that's why we potentially haven't been speaking up. To the point of safe, you know, trying to keep the town outside of these types of substance abuse facilities, as my understanding, and I'd like your opinion, Mr. Bailey, what we're essentially creating here with option four is medical center or clinic, which in my opinion would be the least possible for us to defend against a substance abuse facility coming into. Correct? If we're outlining an area where medical center or clinic exists, I would say a substance abuse facility that came in, we would have very little legal ground to say that they can't come in. Would that be correct?
The short answer is yes, but if someone proposed, if we make this change, and we have a specific district in which medical centers, clinics are allowed, and someone came in and proposed a substance rehab facility somewhere other than where medical centers and clinics are allowed, I would take a very, and I know anybody who would be town council would take a very aggressive position, that no, substance rehab facilities are a subset of medical clinics, and they can only be allowed where medical clinics are allowed.
So effectively, we're creating an area where substance abuse facilities could very easily come in. So what I would like to petition the board is, please understand that what you're creating is a high likelihood scenario, that a substance abuse facility could come into the IO center, which if you stand at the front door of this building, you are looking at it. So your children will be going to school in an area that was already brought up by the other gentleman, that has very transient buildings and Stewart Healthcare, which is moving out, these are buildings you can see from this school.
Right, and that is, and that is the challenge of all of these districts, and that's kind of, that's why I'm taking it out, because of, if it's not industrial office, it's highway business. Well, highway business would subject, Willard Circle would be the most closest to that. The industrial there, per wall, well, you've got the Downey's right behind that, and those trails and everything. You know, so that's, that's the thing, if we pick, if we reactionary, if we sort of react and say, "Oh, let's, instead of putting in the arrow, let's stick it in industrial." But I get your point, you're saying by even identifying the medical centers, you feel that exposes us to, or, Mr. Bailey, do you?
Yeah. We include.
Oh.
I was just reminded by Nora that the definition of medical center actually specifically excludes substance rehab facilities, which I should have known, because I wrote it, but, yeah, slipped her mind in the moment.
Which, which is illegal, according to Massachusetts law, because that would be discriminatory against a disabled class of people. Correct?
Not if you had it someplace else.
But we don't.
But we don't.
Right.
But, but don't we have it everywhere else?
Yeah, exactly.
So we do have it, everywhere.
Correct, but now you're trying to move it to specific areas, the IO and the industrial area.
So I think the issue would be if we, if we listed it and we said, "No, no, 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 no," across the boards, clearly that would be a problem. If we, if we don't include it, then we're not discriminating, and then it just gets to a question of, is it a greater, is it, how's it affecting the risk? I mean, the risk of not having anything in there at all exposes, I think, the local business districts to the possibility of medical centers.
I completely agree with that strategy. I think to Mike McCusker's convert, you know, comments, this is what the board was trying to do with the ARO. There's an existing facility there that isn't necessarily moving right now, and I know there's concerns about them moving in the future, but if you look at the IO, there's a lot of potential for empty buildings that are the perfect size for a substance abuse facility, directly across from the school where everybody in this room's kids go to school. So, the one thing I just want to say is that when we had this adult use only, you talked about putting in an area that was unlikely to have that type of building enter into that area, you identified the industrial area. You didn't include the IO for the adult use only. And so I'm just wondering, to this, you know, board, can we propose looking at the industrial area only and excluding the IO? If you're trying to protect the town, you'd want to move it to an area that's unlikely to have that type of development.
So limiting the medical centers to industrial only and not the IO? I'd be okay with that.
You could do that.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to hear more, what the negative, what the fallout would be from that, from eliminating IO and just keeping it industrial. Either legal fallout or practical. I'm not.
Why don't we, I think, are there, I think there's people lined up, or?
Yeah, I know there's more people wanting to ask. I want to give them time, but I was just responding to what he has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Doug Cross, 135 Allen Street. So I just had a question in terms of the location, because in the town bylaws, it says for the adult entertainment use, that type of use degrades the quality of life in the areas of the community where they are located, with impacts including increased levels of crime and blight. I'd argue the same thing for drug rehab facilities. It's known that they increase the crime around that area. So I wonder why it would be okay to locate it in an ARO that sits on top of a residential area?
It's, it's, we're not, that's not the proposal now, I mean, we're, and we're saying no for the ARO for medical centers as well. We're not.
Right, well, the planning board's original article proposed that treatments that are used in the ARO zone only, which is four parcels in town, and as we previously discussed, those are, those areas are fully developed now, so with unlikely, that was where the planning board thought it was unlikely that you'd attract one of those uses. At your last hearing in February 26th, you also considered the industrial zoning district, however, that's much bigger, covers much more land, more parcels, more parcels that are currently underutilized and ready for development. So you'd be more likely attracting those uses to the industrial zone if that's what you chose to do.
Did you, and another point I have is, I know that we can't specifically say this ARO or that one, but I know in the adult entertainment district, you do say it cannot be located within 500 feet of a residential property. Would we be able to do that for the East Street, which would eliminate that parcel altogether?
If there would be a zoning change beyond, we couldn't, the short answer is not tonight, not part of this town meeting, but it kind of adds more to the idea of, can we revisit this use, are there other things we could do, like create a, an overlay district or something? So the short answer is not. So the short answer is not in this.
And I guess one last comment is, since the ARO zoning cannot be detrimental to the residential use of adjacent property, my wife and I just moved here seven months ago, moved here for a safe community. I live 12 feet across the road from the East Street Meditech, and I think that would be pretty detrimental to my property if a drug rehab facility went in there. Thank you.
Should I? Should I? I forgot. Maybe we didn't mention this earlier. Your modified language, also your previous original article proposed allowing the leases only by special permit, which is a discretionary approval by the zoning board of appeal. So if this article were to eventually, this or any others were to go forward, it would still require an applicant to go through the special permit process, and those impacts to others, traffic, the neighborhood, those would be considered during the special permit stage when an application was proposed.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Patrick Casey, and I've lived at 141 Carol Avenue for over 40 years. The property where Meditech is located was originally, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. Was it originally residential property? If I remember correctly, there was an old house on that property. We were notified by the town that they wanted to change the property from residential to commercial. After many, many meetings with the residents, we got a pledge from the town that the property would only be used for research if we commission, if we gave permission to change the property to commercial. We were promised at that time that the surrounding land would never be developed or disturbed. The town must have this information in their archives. After that promise, the residents gave their consent to the change in the property to be changed to commercial with the stipulations in place. I'm kind of sorry we made that decision. I wonder are the town going to honor this, this pledge that they gave us back then? That it would only be used for research, and we voted to change it from residential to commercial? Do we of the neighborhood mean anything to the town? Are they going to honor this? Thank you.
Hi, Suda Sarman, I'm a local circulator. So from the prior planning board reading to been prompted now for this pivot with the change in the language, I'm not exactly clear still what we're, you know, what the proposal is doing as far as what the lawyer's saying, the rest. My question is, and I've heard in three different forums from three different town officials, and social media and in person, that if we don't do this now, the whole town is at risk. Right? So I know we're talking, and we've taken off substance abuse, but I think just the intent and the original meaning of the article needs to still be discussed, because it could come up again. But the original risk assessment, I'm just curious, who performed that? Who looked at that? Who challenged that? When you're talking about, when the line is out there that says the whole town is at risk, because if we don't zone for this, a company could come in anywhere and apply, to me that implies, is there an imminent threat, imminent risk, or is this a potential risk? Who's balancing that? Who's doing that risk analysis? We have a room full of educated people here. I mean, this neighborhood alone has architects, business owners, medical professionals, lawyers. They are all knowledgeable. So we'd like to understand that original risk assessment of, you know, proposing, there's this potential risk that a company will come in, and I guess the zoning board would be strapped to deny a placement of a business anywhere. So I'd like to understand that part is, you know, who performed that risk analysis? And what, what came out of that?
I think, I don't know if, Dan, you gave more of a legal analysis of it, I think. And in terms of a risk assessment, I think we've all had to use our judgment as everybody in this room, and I guess we, I mean, I'll think about it in terms of, I asked for Dan to talk about this a little bit, and I said things like, well, what happens if somebody next in my neighborhood buys a house next door and wants to do this? How much of a real risk is that? And kind of walked through a lot of different scenarios. Is that something you could speak to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at this somewhat through the lens of the University Station work that I've done with the town, but as University Station has evolved, and we got a Brigham's facility down there, I think that's when the light kind of went off, and we said, well, we better define that facility, that medical facility, to exclude substance rehab, because we don't want Brigham to be bringing those uses in, and they certainly could. It's in their scope of services provided. And, you know, Abby and Nora are sort of mold boots on the ground on this, but, you know, I think they started thinking about it. And also, this is something that's much more in the news in the last two to three years. I mean, I was listening to NPR the other day, and they were talking about how there were three sober houses on a single block in Dorchester. So it's something that's much more in the news today than it was three, four, five years ago. You know, just with the whole opioid epidemic, you know, I know that the city of Quincy is currently fighting a battle over relocation of a rehab facility that was in downtown Quincy for many years. So it, I, part of the answer is, it's a hot topic.
Sorry, just to follow up as far as the legal rules, so all the towns around us, is the research done that all the towns around us have a zoned area for this medical use purpose?
It's a great question, and I don't know the answer, and I think that's one of the things that we need to look more closely at.
I checked in, some of them don't, but I do think the town needs to deal with it.
Additional comments?
Hi, Jane De Palma, 106 Strasser Ave. With all due respect to Mr. Bailey, we're not Dorchester. I get that they have like a bunch of sober houses or whatever, but my first question would be for the panel here, for the board, I mean, how many of you, could you raise your hand and let us know how many of you live, actually live in the affected area, potentially affected areas? Any of you?
How close? I live in Westwood.
I mean, but, but the potentially, so we're all in the Downey area near Meditech, so how many of you on the board live in the area that might be potentially affected? Could you raise your hand?
I sent three kids through the Downey School.
Okay, so one. Okay, great. Two. All right, but the rest of you, no. So, and let me ask you, what happens if we do nothing? If we do nothing, if we don't change any zoning, what happens to the town? We keep hearing about like, oh, the whole town's at risk. What happens if we don't do anything? We don't change anything? What happens?
Well, we can't really predict what would happen. We know there's a risk out there. We don't know how much, but we're trying our best to mitigate that risk.
Okay, so there's a risk. So I would just want to know, is what you're asking, that we zone in a particular use in a particular neighborhood, to zone it out of other nicer neighborhoods? Is that what we're doing here? You know, and why not? I mean, I've heard a lot of talk on, you know, social media about, we're not going to zone it into the University Ave, because there's too many potentially high uses and high, you know, tax, you know, in that area. So we don't want to zone it into the University Ave area, because we could get more money for the town there, so we're going to zone it into our neighborhood. And I think as neighbors, we need to know what's happening with that. Is that, is that an issue? Is that, is the, is the issue of changing the zoning about the tax incentive?
No, the issue with changing the zoning is to do our job as a planning board and determine the best location for each use. If the uses are not defined, and people are allowed to come in and do whatever they want, wherever they want, then all neighborhoods are adversely affected.
And that's fine. I get that, that all neighborhoods are adversely affected, and all neighborhoods are at risk. But why put our neighborhood, the Downey School, Islington, those neighborhoods at risk? Why are we less important? You're zoning it in, in order to zone it out of other places. Isn't that what you're doing?
Well, I would say that those areas, the areas of University Station, and all these are, these are where the industrial uses currently are. These are where, no one's going to be building a business on Dover Road, because it's fully residential, and, you know, it's, it's, so it's, we're trying to, the risk is in the areas like Islington Center. It's in the areas where, that are not built out yet. That's where it's most likely something could happen.
So as a person who doesn't live in those areas, are you saying that Islington Center and those neighborhoods deserve to take more of a brunt of that?
So I don't, you know, and actually...
Because that's what's happening. Those neighborhoods are taking the brunt of the commercial, industrial, the changes, and the other neighborhoods in Westwood are not. And what we're doing by zoning them into this area is zoning them out of other areas that are nicer areas. Clackworth Tree Street, all the other places that people don't want them, those types of institutions zoned into their neighborhood. They don't want to be at risk. So you're zoning it into our neighborhood. Is that fair? You don't live there. Right?
So I don't need to respond to like, where do we live? I mean, actually, we all live in Islington.
You do need to respond, though. You don't live there, so you can't talk about it. You, you have a vested interest in zoning it into my neighborhood. Right? You have a vested interest in zoning it into my neighborhood, because you don't live there.
I think we've...
Isn't that correct?
No, no, it's not.
Isn't that correct?
It's not, and, you know, I think we need to go on to additional comments.
Okay, right. Well, you know what? If I didn't live in that neighborhood, I would say, go for it. I'd do the same thing. I would do what you were doing. I would do what you're doing.
Well, I mean, I live...
Going it someplace else, not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard. Yep. You know what?
If I may respond, I understand your anger, and I think...
No, you don't understand my anger. You don't.
You asked if I lived in this area. I do, yeah. I do, and it really doesn't matter. If you've listened, the proposal that Abby put forth is to take it off the table for discussion. We're not talking about zoning it in there right now. We're talking, it's going to happen somewhere. You're right.
It's going to happen.
Some, and when, if it's not in the ARO, it's going to be in a different place, and there's going to be a different set of people. You guys will be somewhere else, not caring, just like you didn't care when other things were happening across town and other things. I get it. It's always about what's happening in your backyard. I understand that. Our job, when we were voted in, was to do what's best for the town. Initially, this use was proposed to be in the ARO. We've heard the comments, and now this rehabilitation facility use is being proposed to be withdrawn, and stay the same as it's been, so we can review it. Because we understand, two weeks ago, the very first time this board met, and we had a group of people raising opposition to this, two weeks ago, was the very first time. Whether people knew it or not, it went through all the public notifications, two plus years ago, when it actually passed town meeting. So the planning board's not trying to slip something under the rug. We were trying to do our job. Okay? Again, it's going to be somewhere. We don't know where. We're hearing you, and we're pulling this proposed, Abby's proposal is to pull it from this town meeting. So it will not be in the ARO after this town meeting. I don't know what's going to happen in the future. We'll have a different board at some point. We'll have different people. It could end up way across town.
So I'd like to, I'd like to take three additional comments, and then I'd like us to discuss and vote, and then...
What happens if we do nothing? Right?
First, if we do nothing, the planning board is not doing its job. Our job, and we took an oath, was to do our best for the town collectively. And that means we have to look at, and we hear residents, but we're not planning if we do, if we do nothing. Occasionally, we see errors in our bylaws. Every town meeting, we have housekeeping, we have things Abby will review, or Nora will review, and they'll realize, hey, wait a minute. Back in whatever it was, 1962, they didn't address this. We have to change this. We realized after University Station, we have to address this, especially with this emerging industry of rehabilitation facilities. So that's what we're trying to do. We tried, we heard, now we're stepping back, and we're reassessing.
I think the thing is, what's the worst case scenario if we do nothing? That's, I think that's what most people want to know, like...
Abby, is there any place, if we did nothing, is there any place a rehab facility could not go?
No.
Or Dan?
No.
Dan, can you answer that? Could they move into the house right next to anyone on Strasser Ave?
I talked to a lawyer, who's also a city councillor in Quincy today. He called me with a question on zoning, and then he said, can I ask you another question? His name's Brian Palmucci. And councillor Palmucci said, is there anything we can do about these sober houses? And I said, geez, you know, funny, you should ask. I've been looking at that. And I know that's not in front of you tonight, but I think it's a good indication. And I said, what's the issue, Brian? He said, well, over in a certain section of Quincy, a very affluent section of Quincy, right on the Milton Line, where there are million dollar houses, someone purchased a very large house, and it is occupied by 12 to 15 residents as a sober house. That's exactly what could happen here, with a rehab facility.
It could be in a residential home.
So in any neighborhood.
In any neighborhood. Residents, industrial, industrial office, anywhere. So that's what we're trying to address. We recognize as a board, that's bad. That's bad planning on our part. So we're trying to address that.
So I'd like to, let's get the people who are standing now, and then I'd like to move this to a discussion vote. Go ahead.
My name's Paul McGlaughlin. I live at 39 Hawthorne Street. I've lived there for 26 years. I'm not a director butler of Meditech, but I am about a couple of football fields away from the land there. I appreciate Dan's explanation. It kind of, it did help, kind of make sense of things. I'm certainly aware of the adult district issue that's come up in, over the years in towns, and I see that evidently, you know, and I take Dan at his word, that that's the way, that also applies in this situation. You know, my issue is, I feel like, I guess it's Abby, I feel like the idea of, you know, we're given four, three or four options, whatever it was, one of them was to withdraw. And I feel like that it's kind of like, we're kind of playing the boogeyman here by saying like, if we don't do this, then like, as if somebody's going to step in tomorrow and open up a sober house, or a drug rehab somewhere in town, potentially in our neighborhood. And I don't think that's really accurate. And I think, to me, the best idea would be to withdraw the whole thing, get all these people that are here that are concerned about it, to actually get some good public input. You're right, Mr. McCusker, I didn't know until two weeks ago, until somebody knocked on my door, one of my neighbors, and said, hey, you should know about this. Shame on me, I didn't know, but I know now, and I'm concerned about my neighborhood. So while, while I am not a town planner or a city planner, and I know you people all have experience in that, I have spent 31 years as a police officer in Boston. I have seen extensively what goes on around drug rehab centers all over the city. I've seen the crime, I've seen the issues of people driving impaired, I've seen, I've seen things that I don't want to see in a residential neighborhood. And I think it's completely irresponsible to try to put something in that neighborhood. We have people that live, one gentleman that just spoke 12 feet away, his house is directly across the street. You know, it's, it's already a neighborhood that get, has traffic. Carol Ave is a, is a heavy traffic street at certain times of the day. Meditech, when it lets out the day, they're all coming down Carol Ave. Our neighbor, my kids are all grown up and moved out, but there's a ton of little kids in the neighborhood that walk around there, that are playing in the streets. You know, it's funny, the last meeting, they talked all about sidewalks. We don't have a sidewalk in our entire neighborhood. So I mean, so the idea, you know, I too don't want to play the boogeyman and say, we're going to turn into Methadone Mile. But, but, I have great concerns about the things that come along with, with substance abuse, substance abuse clinics, the things that come along by way of, not necessarily the people that are there that are trying to get themselves well, but the people that come there and prey on them. All right? The drug dealers, the pimps and everything else. I don't want to... So I think, I think... I don't want to create, so I think, I think that it would make sense for somebody to say, let's pull this back, let's have some real good discussion where we sit down as people, all these people here that have concerns, and say, how do we figure out where this thing, where we can zone it so that it works for everybody in town? I don't want to say stick it on the Meditech over on 109. I'm not trying to put it in somebody else's place, but there has to be someplace in town that we could put it, that wouldn't be directly across the street from people's houses. People that have lived there, like this gentleman here, 40-something years, people that, you know, I've been there 26, I don't, I don't need it. I'm at that stage where I'm getting ready to retire. I've thought about whether I want to stay in Westwood or not. My wife says we're staying, so. But you talk about, you talk about the, you talk about the, you know, we talk about the property values of your house, all right? As I look towards retirement and we talk about doing some work on our house and putting on addition, I'm not putting a shovel in the ground until I know that I'm not going to have a substance abuse place a couple of hundred years. That affects me, but it affects the taxes that my house is going to be worth. So, I just ask you to please, you know, consider what's going on. I understand we're coming into this late in the game, but consider it and consider just withdrawing it and having some real input over the next year. Reintroduce it at town meeting next year, if that's possible, and go that route. I appreciate it.
Hi, Kate Winn again. 10 Cedar Hill Drive. I did have things to say about the sidewalk, but I would also, if I'm not, if I didn't use up my time earlier on stupid sidewalks. Anyway, I had a couple of things to say and I really appreciate hearing what everybody has to say on this. It's been, it's just nice to see neighbors out, to be honest. I don't get out much, so this is, this is really nice for me. So, I do have a question that I love Mr. Bailey to answer at some point, but not right this second. So, the issue we're running into is, the world around Westwood has changed. This is like what I'm gathering, right? The world around us has changed. And we want to have as much control over the way that our town changes as possible. And right now, we have a couple of areas where we can be pretty sure for a reasonable amount of time that nothing is going to change, right? So, so if we say that those areas, and please let me finish, I'll get to a reasonable point in a minute. If we say that those areas are a good option for a use that we don't particularly want, it's a very low-risk proposition because those places are occupied. If we choose a place that's available and say, we're going to put, we're going to put these things there, this is a great place, we could get a lot of them more quickly than we can handle. And then we're not in a place of decision anymore as a town. We have fewer choices to be able to make. And we have a lot of them to make because as we saw just with the, with the development earlier this evening, there's big projects. People have money to do big projects and lots of them. So, I just like people to be very thoughtful and even if this gets bumped to a later time, please stay engaged. This is a really important topic for the entire town. And I know a lot of us, I don't anymore, but a lot of us have little kids. Well, eventually you're going to have middle schoolers and eventually you're going to have high schoolers. And you don't want these things on Manhattan Street either. You know, our children, I think you've heard from our board, they care a lot about everybody's kids, right? And it shows up in the ridiculous discussions about sidewalks and streetlights and those kinds of things. We don't want any of our children or older people to be vulnerable. And anyway, that's more about that. I'd like people to stay engaged. I'd love to not have 1,000 of these places in an industrial area, quickly. It would be really hard to recover from, as somebody said earlier, I grew up next to the Otomile, I don't want to raise my kids in the Methadone Mile. That's not what I want. And we have a mile that we could give. And I'm not, I don't mean by the Downey. I mean, if we choose an industrial area, we could get a lot of them, fast. So, and the other thing I just wanted to mention, Meditech, and I know this is going to get pushed off, but I just want to say, Meditech is not owned by anyone. They determine their own fate. They stay where they want to stay, they leave where they want to leave. And when their CEO writes the town a letter saying, we're going to stay, we have no intention of leaving and we have no intention of conducting this type of business, and he's a Westwood resident, that's meaningful for me. That gives us a level of assurance that we couldn't get from maybe anybody else. And the Stewart Healthcare, they do not own themselves. They don't determine their own fate. They go where their owner tells them to go. So, so anyway, great to see everybody. Thank you so much to our board and I hope everybody has a great night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Rockensys. I'm at 69 Hawthorne. And first of all, I do want to, as Paul said, shame on us because I think I will fully take responsibility for being complacent and stuck in my own little world and only hearing about this two weeks ago as well. I know that you've put a lot of thought into this and it feels blindsiding, so I do empathize with you. I also want to say that I have relatives who have substance abuse issues, who've been in treatment and I certainly actually think having a facility to help people is always a good thing. I do also know that things can go wrong at those facilities. And, so I am concerned as a mother, but also as a teacher. I've been teaching for over 20 years. And I grew up in Brooklyn, New York, not the safest place to grow up. And coming to Westwood, it's like Shangri-La, especially when I was told by my realtor that I was on the other side of the tracks. I didn't even know what he meant. But I will say that, having taught for over 20 years, not in Westwood but in Newton, I actually have never been more afraid, even as a little girl, you know, in Brooklyn. You know, in recent years, when there's a fire drill at school, the kids don't want to leave the building. So I now, we used to always make sure the kids go out first and I feel emotional, I didn't expect this, but, you know, we were always expected to let the kids out first. And recently, they won't leave the building until I go out, make sure it's safe. Because we can't trust that the fire drill, the fire bell means that there's actually a fire in the building, that there isn't someone out there to bring danger to them. As a teacher, it's frightening to think that I'm in charge of these kids and I have to protect them because they're someone else's child and I have three kids of my own and I know, I know that that, in all of our hearts as parents, is all we want to do. And while I do believe that I would, I can't even imagine how hard it is to find the correct zone for this and I trust, if you've done all the research, that you believe that this is what we need to do. But I implore you is not to have it anywhere near a school or anywhere where there's a high population of kids. The anxiety in kids through the years is through the roof. So, you know, looking at middle school and high schoolers who won't leave a building for a fire drill, looking at kids who are afraid every time there's another shooting, knowing that they're more susceptible to, than ever, to not only vaping, but opioid use, to all the drugs that are out there. We do live in a scarier world than we have in the past. And so I just want you to really make that sort of your first priority as you do continue to collaborate and find the right place for this zone. And I want to thank you for your time.
My first time. Annie Lewis O'Connell, I live at 42 Hawthorne Street, have lived in this town for 27 years and this has compelled me to come out tonight. In my everyday life, I work at Brigham Young's Hospital, I run a clinic on violence, abuse and trauma. And many of my patients suffer from this. I am all-in about, you know, about us providing care and caring for these patients. And I want to wholeheartedly say to you tonight that, being in a residential neighborhood, we need to think about this. A lot of my work over the past five years has, 10 years actually, has really enlightened me about substance use disorder and the intersection of it in many other realms of our life. And one in particular that is very near and dear to me lately is human trafficking. And if you do not know about this, I ask you all to watch the show that was on 48 Hours on Saturday night. This will make very real for all of you in this room. Don't think our kids are exempt from this because they're not. So, as we think about this, we have to think about what, what else is it going to bring to our community. And I got to tell you, we do not have our arms around this. And as we think about providing care and services to these, these patients that I care so deeply about, we have to also think at the same time and hold ourselves responsible of what are we going to bring to our community because it's a reality. Law enforcement, we heard from Paul tonight, who's one of my biggest heroes, the work that he's done firsthand, those of us firsthand that see this, I need to tell you, this is ugly. This is not pretty. I, my heart goes into these patients every single day. I'm here late tonight because I dealt with this tonight, real time. And I have to tell you that, in our society today, it's so incredibly painful that this is what's happening. Our people that have substance use disorder are exploited by human trafficking. And when we think about this, we have, in our community, there is a good likelihood that the prayers on those folks are going to come right here. And we have to be prepared for this. If you want statistics, I'm a researcher as well, I will give you statistics. I will spend all the time I need to provide that to this board, but I have to tell you, you have to think about this. Because it's my reality, every single day, I deal with people that, all of you, parents sitting in this audience, these are my patients' parents sitting here tonight that are suffering with this. If you don't think it's in our community, it is. If you think human trafficking is something that's happening outside the United States of America, oh my gosh, it's alive and well right here in our community. So I implore you to really think about it. I'll work with you, I'll provide you with data if you need it. And I live in the same community that we're talking about. I just heard about this two weeks ago. Please be transparent. Please be transparent. I've lived here 27 years and I've dedicated myself. I've raised three kids in this community. I love it here and I'm thinking like Paul, like, do I want to retire here? Do I want to stay here? And this property abuts my house. I want my family to be safe. I want the kids in my community to be safe and I have to tell you, we have an ugly epidemic going on. Please, please learn about it and ask those of us that work in that every single day and we'll bring that information forward. Thank you.
Okay, are there-
Hi, I'm Karen Amory. I live at 121 Smith Drive. I actually wasn't going to speak tonight. I've heard so many interesting comments tonight. I also want to thank the board. I know that you obviously put in a lot of thought into this and I can certainly understand you might be feeling a little blindsided. I think everyone's just very passionate on the subject. The reason I got to speak was I also want to follow up with the young lady who just talked and Mr. McGonigal. I work for the Department of Veterans Affairs. I am a benefits outreach advisor. I also am a claims adjudicator. I work with a lot of the veterans, a lot of our combat veterans with PTSD, and most of them have substance abuse problems. And I can tell you that if you want drugs, you go to Court Street, the New England Chelter of Homeless Veterans, that's where you can get drugs. If, I also work at the Brockton VA Medical Center, doing outreach there. If you want drugs, you go to the Brockton VA Medical Center. You have to think of what's going to be coming into the neighborhood. The bus on Washington Street, people walking up East Street to get to this place, maybe people parking across the street at the Norfolk Country Club, watching people going in and out. You're going to be bringing a lot. No one is more passionate about helping people with substance abuse problems, but I'm sorry, I don't want it in my neighborhood. Not with my child, not with my family. Thank you.
My name is Mooki Chowdhury. I live on 145 Adams Street, which is the closest home to Meditech. And I'm a physician. I take care of patients with substance abuse and I remember many of them who died in my hands. And I have referred patients to substance abuse clinics. And it's not just being a NIMBY. I know what, and I let go all what was said just before I came here. This is not something we want in our neighborhood and I really appreciate you taking a lead on that and helping us to avoid this situation. Thank you.
I think they've had plenty of comments here and do we want to discuss further or-
I have a question for Dan.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Dan. Abby, if you can leave this slide up. If we change Office of Doctor or Dentist to Healthcare Professional, that's sort of a blanket profession. That could be a councillor, a social worker, it could be a drug rehab, a drug, you know, specialist. Is that making those areas more susceptible to a drug rehab facility, as you said, the industrial section would, than if we left it as a doctor or dentist?
It's my understanding that the, they've modified the definition to exclude that.
From Office of Doc, Healthcare Professional?
Yes.
No, the existing definition in the zoning, we do have a definition today for Office of Healthcare Professional. And that's an office for a medical doctor, dentist, psychiatrist, similar, you know, similar physical and mental healthcare professional. But that says excludes medical centers or medical clinics. And then we do have a definition for medical center or medical clinic. That's about the diagnosis and treatment of human patients, but does not include substance rehabilitation or overnight care facilities. The main reason for proposing a change from Office of a Doctor or Office of a Dentist was just to clarify that it's Healthcare Professional. The term Healthcare Professional is found elsewhere in the zoning, in our overlay districts. That's where we found it in 2017, it was in our overlay district, in the University of Overlay. And that's where we first noticed it when we reviewed the Brigham Young Women's in 2017. So the intent of changing that language is to be more consistent with having a use in our definition section and then matching it to the table of uses. The way it is right now, we have Office of a Doctor or Dentist, but then it's not defined in the definition section.
Dan, did you have-
I mean, it, this is getting very subtle. And I know that's what I'm being asked and that's okay. Healthcare Professional is slightly broader than Doctor or Dentist. So, yes, I think there are probably, I'll put it this way. If I was representing someone who was trying to get some sort of treatment facility, I'd rather have a definition that says Healthcare Professional than a Doctor or Dentist. Now, I mean, it's, in a sense, it doesn't matter because I'm pretty confident I'd win that case either way, you know, given what's in the bylaw now, you know. And I think you also have to think about how this Office of a Doctor or Dentist has always been applied in this town. We've got lots of offices of physical therapists, of psychologists, and, you know, I don't know how it's administered day-to-day by the building inspector, but I think he probably interprets this pretty broadly to mean, you know, any healthcare professional.
Dan, sorry, I just had to follow up to that. So, in our definition, or proposed definition of Healthcare Professional, it essentially, it negates medical center or clinic. It basically pushes it down and says, no, you got to do that somewhere else. So we did that somewhere else. And within that, we further said, no rehab facility is to be considered a medical center or clinic. Is that defendable?
The problem with that is it's circular, okay?
But then we proposed to further define it on down the line. But we're not going to at this point. At least that's the proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're, one of the things that's challenging about this is, you know, we're trying to get it as right as we can and that's great. But it's, you know, we're, you know, how do I explain this? The board has decided not to, you know, to further study the key issue. So, anything less than that is really around the edges. You know, it probably is not impactful- You know, it probably is not impactful in any real way, if I'm making myself clear.
What's not impactful?
This kind of change. You know, changing from Doctor or Dentist to Healthcare Professional. That's...
Well, it's just cleaning up our language.
It's just cleaning up our language. You know, Debbie's point, I think, is well taken, you know. And I start thinking about this as a lawyer making an argument. Okay, it's a little bit broader term, but, you know, what we're talking about, I mean, one way to put it, you know, when we start, you know, slicing and dicing on these things, when, you know, really the elephant in the room is the rehab facility, you know, this is pages 700 and 800 as opposed to page 1.
And that's why I was asking, if we take out the rehab facility and hospital from discussion tonight or this town meeting, would the decision to include the medical center or clinic be something that we could defend because the wording, our definition, prohibits rehab facility from being considered as a medical center?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable defending the medical center clinic, medical center or clinic language.
That decision to include it.
And in part, I mean, that, yeah. And let's also think, medical center or clinic is, it's not a protected class. It's not a use that is potentially per se discriminatory. It's not protecting a disabled class. It's just, it's what Brigham has down at University Station.
Okay.
All right, so I think we need to come to a consensus here. I think there's no consensus on the original, well, I didn't say no, but I think we're not going to take option one, which is to submit the article as written. We have basically a couple of options in front of us. We could withdraw it completely. We could take the alternative that's been proposed. Do you have a sense of which option you favor?
Can I just make a statement? Yes, so for me, I'm opposed to having this at the Meditech Center, so I just want everybody to know that in the room. I would like to consider, for the table itself, for the medical center. And what we can't show you, what we don't have to show you in the room is that the definitions themselves for these two categories includes exclusionary language for substance rehabilitation and treatment facilities. So there's, the definition that's being proposed as modified includes that exclusion. But what I wanted to ask the board is to the, to the point of the industrial office for the lower row to remove the Board of Appeals for the IO for the industrial office. So for the, so the language that's being proposed, I'm okay with. What I'm questioning is the BA, so the Board of Appeals, is that the...
Zoning Board of Appeals.
For the IO column, so the industrial office.
So put a no.
Put an N there.
So put an N for the IO in that last place there. So to further, so the medical center would only be permitted in the industrial zone.
I'd like to ask Abby her thoughts. She thought this through and put in the industrial office. Were there other things to consider, why it's included as proposed in the industrial office as well as industrial?
No, I mean, you could do that. I mean, it was, you know, I looked at both the zoning districts together, the industrial and then industrial O, the industrial office, but you could remove it and only propose it in the industrial zone only.
I'm not seeing the exclusion on the, do I not have, is that from...
That was sent to us by Abby.
That was from 2017.
That's in the existing...
The strike through is being...
This is the one that they're working on.
Is that strike through being recommended for this town meeting?
Hold on. It's the existing, let me see, which one is this?
That's page 3.
The way I'm reading is that that's from 2017, the 2000, the one that you're recommending doesn't say excluding substance rehabilitation.
This is, so right now, the modified language that you're discussing right now includes not changing the language that you currently have in the zoning by law for medical center. So it would say, it would read the human patients, that does not include substance rehabilitation or overnight care facilities, removes the new reference, the underlined wording. So the strike through would stay, but the underlined word would be...
So I think we are, I think we're all, we're in agreement on this issue of, in terms of we want to make sure it's excluded from the definition of medical center. So I think that's what, we would not be, if we want to go this way, then we want to make sure it's excluding substance rehab.
And from Office of Healthcare Professional.
From both of those things. It says, is not, so medical center or clinic, a building designed and used for the diagnosis and treatment of human patients, that is not a hospital or substance rehabilitation or treatment facility. And the Office of Healthcare Professional is defined, at the end of that, it also says...
Or hospitals.
Or hospitals.
Or substance rehabilitation.
Or substance rehabilitation treatment.
My modified motion did not include that new language that references those two uses because you are then taking it out of the table. So thought it was best if you define it, so if you pull, if you call out the hospital substance abuse facility in a new definition, then you really should include it in your table of uses. So that's why my modified motion includes leaving it the way it is.
So if I understand right, at the end of Office of Healthcare Professional, it says excluding offices within medical centers or clinics. And it would end right there, right? It wouldn't include the red line part that says hospitals or substance rehabilitation. But when it says excluding offices within medical centers or clinics, you go to medical center or clinic and it says does not include substance rehabilitation or overnight care facilities.
Why do we have to put it in then?
No, it's already here. So you just get rid of all of these things. So this would refer back to the medical center or clinic. That's how I'm understanding what you're saying. I think we're covered. I just, I want to understand what Abby had put through.
All right, so Abby, are you, so what we're, so Chris, what do you support? Like you would support it with exclusionary language in there to make sure that a medical center...
I, I like option four that Abby presented. I think we do need a heck of a lot more research into where this is going to go and who it's going to be affecting. But I suppose, I like the idea of including industrial office, but if the board, it wouldn't be a deal breaker for me to drop it. But I want, I think it's important we move forward on medical center or clinic and healthcare professional as a, in the use chart.
Okay, so I think, so let's just, if we had, if we changed the IO to no up there, so we're saying Board of Appeals for Medical Center or Clinic only allowed in the industrial district. And the definition of medical center or clinic includes exclusionary language here that says it's not a hospital or substance rehab facility.
I'm good with that.
Right. And on the other one, is there other, on the Office of Healthcare Professional, is that...
I think you'd lose the red part, right, Abby?
So it doesn't reference, it would not make any reference to substance abuse.
But it does refer to not a medical center, which, within medical center, it says no rehab.
Okay, I see what you're, yeah, you're saying logically that it excludes medical center.
It's like a domino.
And the definition of medical center contains the exclusion of...
Right. That's, if that's what the language that Abby had put forth, that's how I'm interpreting it. Is that right, Abby?
Yes. My modified proposal to you didn't include changing the definitions, but the existing definition for medical center or clinic makes reference to, but does not exclude exclusion.
All right, okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I agree with that.
So the proposal here would be to approve, to recommend, to town meeting this revised language that takes out the substance abuse rehab center, defines medical center or clinic, which is only permitted in the industrial zone, and the definition of medical center or clinic excludes substance rehabilitation or treatment facilities.
Just to be clear, Mr. Bailey? I know you're writing, but does our logic make legal sense in your mind?
Can I say what you're looking at?
Absolutely. I believe what we're talking about is including this red line, because that's the original, getting rid of this underline here, underline here.
Getting rid of that, red underline. Yeah, I like that.
So we get rid of the underline here, underline here. In this, in this place, it says, but excluding offices within medical centers or clinics. And then up here, it says, that does not include substance rehabilitation overnight facilities.
Yeah.
Does that...
We had, this was the original, but we had taken it out since we're not calling where these would go.
So you're not putting out substances?
That was not mine, but...
But this...
I think we should be, people can't hear what you're saying at all, so it's kind of...
Sorry, I'm sorry, but I mean...
I know, I'm just trying to make sure it flows logically.
How could you word it, to protect both?
I need some peer pressure from this side.
I've got your, I think it's Abby's memo, and I think that what you're trying to do is, there was a recommendation made and you're trying to amend that recommendation to bring back some of what was taken out. Is that what's correct?
Yes, it's, the part that was taken out was the all references to substance abuse rehab center. And the idea is to put that, include that in the exclusion of the definition of a medical center. She took it out because we tried to take everything that made any reference to this from the article.
I mean, I don't see any issue with including it because the general definition of medical center or clinic already has an exclusion for substance abuse rehab facilities.
It references it.
Okay. What do you think?
So is it just going to be with the medical center and not with the Office of Healthcare Professional?
Right, the Office of the Healthcare Professional excludes the medical center. It says offices within the medical center. And then within that, it excludes rehab facility and hospital.
Yeah, and adding it back in there, I don't see any issue with that at all.
That's, I just, before we put this through, I just wanted to make sure legally we were making sense.
Yeah, I actually think that does make sense, is putting it back in, in the Office of a Healthcare Professional.
Okay.
Okay.
Then, yeah, I would, I would support that moving forward.
Likewise. Does someone want to make a motion?
Can I say something real quick? I don't want to be here. My name's John Yang. I'm a board certified internist oncologist. I prescribed a lot of fentanyl and dilated today. I just want you all to know, any doctor like me can say, I'm an internist, I'm opening a wellness center, they'll say, okay, fine. I have the legal right to say, you know, you have chronic pain, now how's that knee? You know, I think you need some fentanyl, you know, come back and see me next month, you'll cash pay 150 a visit. I have the legal right to apply for Suboxone license and to prescribe Suboxone to 150 people. It's not going to be called a, it's not going to be called a drug rehab. So just be aware, if you allow medical professional, the way many in my field operate, we say, I'm opening a wellness center, I treat chronic pain, each visit's $150 cash, you see me once a month. So I think the definition of a medical center, you just have to be careful.
I hear the comment, but I don't see how that's any different than the Office of a Doctor today.
Minister?
Yeah, which you already have.
I think we're covered by the language.
All right, I think, I think we should, I think we should support this modification. It's...
If you want to read it out to him, so he understands.
Brian, let's make a second.
So I make a motion to modify the article as reviewed tonight to update the table of the uses for medical center or clinic by special permit in the industrial zones and rename the Office of Doctor Dentist to Office of Healthcare Professional as presented in revised language prepared by staff.
I'll second that.
Is there any further board discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So it's approved 5-0. And we have other items to get to.
Do you want to just say that it's not in the industrial...
Does everyone understand what just happened?
No, okay, okay.
I'll try to explain and I...
It's not in the IO.
Yeah, it's not in the IO. It's what you see up there, only the bottom line for medical center, under IO, it will say N instead of BA. So that means medical center can only be addressed in the industrial district, which is down at University Avenue.
It's not in the ARO, it's not in the IO.
We are hoping, we will continue discussing the issue of hospital rehab facility at future dates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to go to the bathroom, but I'm afraid.
I want to go to the bathroom, that's what I want to first.
Quickly, big things happening.
What are we doing?
You're welcome.
Dave, give us a little bit... I think Debbie, why don't we take a short break? We'll resume in about five minutes. Okay, we are continuing our discussion of the town meeting articles.
It's tumbleweeds.
The next article that we did not come to consensus on at the last meeting was the article about parking. And Abby, do you want to summarize that? And I think we should do a similar, summarize it, we'll do a similar kind of poll as to where we stand.
So you have, I think in your meeting summary that I gave you, and I'll put this through, that's the existing language for zoning by law. We have added this article to the town meeting warrant for you to reconsider revising this language to really take a look at how you want to regulate vehicle parking and storage on residential properties. Because the way the zoning by law is written now, it says parking or storage for more than three vehicles on a residential lot requires a special permit. But that's very hard and impossible for the building commissioner to enforce because many properties throughout town have a total of, or have more than four vehicles. So I was looking for a guidance in how to move forward.
So am I correct?
Whether you want it to be related to the structure, the garage, or also the parking spaces. So at your last meeting, you talked about that language, but you didn't come to a conclusion on how you want to modify this. I think...
Can I take a quick poll of other board members? Do we feel like we have, we would come to a conclusion on this or...
Well, we didn't two weeks ago. So no, I don't think we did.
I mean, I'm kind of thinking that it's not something we're going to be able to work through.
I honestly, my feeling is there are so many houses in our town with driveways long enough to handle cars, so many cars, that they're clearly in violation. I would say 85% of the homes in Westwood could handle two cars in a garage and more cars in the driveway and be in violation. It doesn't say the parking of cars, it says storage area. So it's just a long driveway, you're in violation.
You have a big driveway, then...
So I would personally, I would, I don't know how far reaching this board is, but I'm more comfortable with the structural housing of garage... I'm more comfortable with the structural housing of gar, of garaging of cars than driving, parking in a driveway. I know that seems to be the visual reason why this is coming up. People are offended by massive cars parked in driveways.
But didn't we get involved in this in the first place based on the question of three car garage, four car garage? Yes?
And, and when the building, the building commissioner does get calls for enforcement, so generally he reviews applications for garages when they come in, and he'll forward the three or more to the zoning board of appeals. But then he will also get calls from people about a neighbor that may have four or five cars in their driveway, and he'll, and they'll ask for enforcement for a special permit.
I can't see people making calls about three cars being in the three car garage, one car in the driveway.
Right, although I can't see, when there was 100 cars, it all comes down to a neighborhood squabble. And then they sit there and they say, there's three cars and there's two in the garage, I'm calling the building inspector.
So you were, you were to recommend just pulling it and having no reach up to this?
You know, I'm not interested in parking as much as I am interested in solidifying whether it's a three car garage or a four car garage that needs a special permit. Yeah, structure, I'm interested in structure, not parking. Because like you say, how far reaching is this board?
The only, the issue is, and I know of a number of instances in the town where, I mentioned a few, two weeks ago, the Airbnb situation. So the only, the only recourse for somebody with an Airbnb is the number of cars. So if I could, so I kind of, I feel like that's a secondary issue, or I'm, I liked the original language here, I think I agree with Mr. Faff and Mr. McCusker, the idea of like, it's hard for us to tell people, like, we've, we've got a situation that's unenforceable. If we just focus on the structure, that's something that seems to fit better. If we need to come up with some other way to limit the number of cars, okay, but this right now, it's, it's unenforceable and it's, people just complain and then.
But I don't think it's in the purview of the planning board to come up with the number of cars parked in the driveway.
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with that and saying I would be happy with it as it was, just to talk about the, saying the size of the garage.
Nora is standing at the microphone. I'd like to hear from her on this.
I wanted to just make sure that if you were considering, if you can't agree on which way to change it, whether it's to block structures that hold four or more cars, or just block four or more cars, please don't leave it the way it is. At a minimum, please take out the word area. Just by making that simple change, that avoids the situation where 75% or more of households in Westwood are currently in violation by simply removing the word area. If that's all you do, then it's still going to be illegal to have four cars at your house, that's when it refers to the vehicles, if all you do is take out area. You could take out area and that ad language that makes it a structure that you're concerned with, if you all agree on that. But please don't simply withdraw the article because we do have a problem now, where it's selectively enforced only upon complaints, and it's, it's simply not fair, and it's just not practical to have a bylaw where the vast majority of homes in town violate the bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with removing area, I'm fine with that.
So we're all in agreement, we remove area?
And that's it.
So are we addressing the, the four car garage situation then? So what's the?
It would still be combined.
So we never did, this structure is part of this article?
No.
Mr. Olunoff, do you have a?
Yeah, the whole purpose of this was to make this be a garage, not, not a driveway. Because, and you haven't even defined what a parking, a garage is in a, in a house. So you find what a garage is, and, and then you can say only three, and that's it. That's all, that's all you're supposed to be doing here, because right now, you don't, can't tell what's going on, that thing. And, and that's, I thought that's what you were just trying to do, and that should be it. Define what a garage is, and, and then say you can only have, you know, a garage for three cars. And, and then fourth is a special permit if you want it.
You're saying a fourth.
And just not say anything about how many cars you're parking in the driveway.
Yeah, so a fourth garage to vehicle, where we require a special permit, which goes back to what we were saying before. I think Nora was just saying, if at the very least you do is pull out the word area, please.
Yeah, that'll make it a little bit less ambiguous, but not completely.
So she was just saying, giving us the low threshold of what she.
So I miss.
So, so yeah, so yeah, let's do it right, you know, define what a garage is, and, and say you allow a three car garage, a fourth car garage by special permit.
Right. Okay, so does that help the person who has an Airbnb next to them?
It doesn't.
The number of cars?
It doesn't change the number of cars. If we just, if we're just talking structure, it's not going to change the number of cars in the driveway when you can call the building inspector. What she's saying is after structure, then at the same time, remove area from the accessory, accessory uses in residential districts?
I'm saying if, if you don't agree on what else to do, and if, if you are, have a majority, if there's a majority in favor of limiting this special permit to structures, and you don't care if somebody has four cars on their property, then go ahead and do that. But if you can't agree on that, I'm suggesting you at least take out the word area, which removes the violation from someone who only has one car, but has parking spaces that would accommodate more than.
The long driveway.
Right, and I also just wanted to read to you, so you know there is another section in the bylaw that deals with more than five or more cars. So under section 6.1, point 14, there's a section that reads special provisions in residential districts. Any off-street parking located in a residential district containing five or more parking spaces shall be placed at least 25 feet from all street lines and 10 feet from the side and rear lot lines, and shall, if visible at normal eye level from any point on an abutting lot, be screened from such view pursuant to the screening standards. So what's that saying, in the case of an Airbnb, that may come into play, if they have a space where they could park five or more vehicles, it couldn't be close to the road, couldn't be along the sides.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of Airbnbs, though, five, you're talking about five.
No, 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 I, I realize that, that's what I'm saying, if, there seems to be a question here between the four or five. Either way, we know three cars would be allowed if you were to make that change by, by taking out the word area. You would be allowed to have three cars. There's nothing in the bylaw now that prevents you from parking three cars, it only prevents you from having space to park four cars. So three is allowed either way, five has to be screened. The question you have to deal with is whether you want to allow people to park four cars or not. This here says you couldn't have the area to park for. Presumably you couldn't park four if you didn't have the area. So I think you have to decide what's important to you. Do you want to regulate the number of cars that are parked? Do you want to regulate the number of spaces? And there, your answer to the bylaw does one or the other.
Where does that second bylaw exist? I mean, where did you read from?
It's in the screening section, 6.1, point 14.
Is Joe aware of that?
Yes, he is.
So is he citing that or more of this?
Probably more of this, I don't think there are all that many.
Five.
Properties that have, that have five unscreened visible spaces that are closer than 25 feet to the front, or closer than 10 feet to the sides. So I don't think that's as much of a concern, there are some properties like that. I can remember several years ago when someone wanted to open a taxi business at their home, that was the concern, that they could only have the five vehicles. Not only would they need the license to operate a taxi business, but they would also need to screen the spaces.
Could we mimic that language, changing the number to three for this bylaw and adding a three car garage, so you can't have more than three visible cars in the driveway?
You could do anything within this section, so yes.
Right, I mean, we can't change the section you just read from.
Right.
But that's, the spirit is you don't want to look at a bunch of cars unless they're well screened and well far away.
So what you, what you could say then is you could remove the word area, not allow anyone to park more than, have more than three cars parked if you wanted. Or you could say by special permit, they could do that, but it would have to be screened. You could add language that would say it has to be screened from normal eye level, repeat the language that's there, but you still, unless you change the more than four, you're still talking about three cars, limiting it to three cars. Is that what you want to do? Three visible cars, yes.
Two, two sections to this. One refers to a three car garage is fine, but a four, a fourth needs a special permit. And if you want more than three cars visible parked in the driveway, you need to screen them and get a special permit and, and whatever that language was you just read.
Yeah, so what you would, you would say just that, you can, you would need, this special permit section would apply if you had more than three indoor parking spaces, or if you had more than three visible outdoor spaces.
Right.
That were not screened in accordance with those requirements. So you, you could, you could change this section to say that.
That seems to me to address the issue that Brian was talking about, an Airbnb, or the house that routinely is just parking outside five cars or, or whatever. It seems like it gives Joe some teeth to address the, the neighborhood issues. I know it's, it's, it's just neighbor versus neighbor, and there's some bad blood there, but Joe, right now, is saying, you got to give me something to work with, because right now I've got nothing. That's what I said, that's what I'm hearing. Everyone has, has a beef right now, because everyone has the area. So I think that, I said four is a magic number last time, and that's kind of what, what I was alluding to here, when you were saying, more than three cars in the drive, in the driveway, or more than three cars parked in the garage, you need a special permit. I like that language where it said it's got to be screened, that you just read to us.
So if you were to change the language to read something like that, what you would be allowing is a total of six cars, three in a garage and three on a property. Anything more than that would have to be screened, or you'd have to have a special permit.
Right, and again, I don't think people are offended by cars parked in a garage. You don't see them, that's the intention of the garage.
And cars in the garage, aren't they technically screened?
They are.
Yeah, that's why I don't care. I mean, if you do four, okay, if you need a four, four car garage, you got to go to ZBI. Or if you want to park four cars in the driveway, you got to go to ZBI and follow their guidelines and, and get it screened.
But I think that probably wouldn't address Brian's concern, because now that does allow you to have six cars without any special permit.
Right, again, but the person who lives next door to an Airbnb.
In those situations, the, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, see, if the cars are being parked in a garage.
You can't see them, you can't count them.
Right, but.
So it's, so I think it's a, it's an unfortunate moot point.
But I mean, who's offended by a car in a garage? It doesn't look unsightly, it doesn't, I, I don't know.
No, this is kind of, it gets into the slippery slope here, like, so you own the property and you park your three cars in the garage, and then the other four spaces out front are for all the rental guests.
Yeah, then you need a, a ZBI, special permit for four.
Three out there, so now you have six. So what people are concerned about is the large number of people, the cars are supporting.
I think three is the, the minimum you can.
So my question would be, well, what if it's just, I think we want to get away from this, this, just the space issue, like, let's say that you have a, a car, you have an asphalt driveway and it's 20 feet wide and 50 feet long, so you can fit at least four cars in that space. Is that, currently, somebody can complain about that, right? That's the problem.
Right, that's right.
The word area is awful in this bylaw.
Yeah, you removed that.
Because whether you use it or not, you're in violation. Whether you park a car there or not, it's just having that much asphalt is a violation. So we want to get.
But Dave, on that size lot, nobody's complaining.
The reading of that, that's what it is. Just owning that much asphalt is a violation without a ZBI, special permit. Am I, is that right, Nora?
I, I think that's how it's been interpreted, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue at hand.
Oh, right away.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to change.
Yeah, we're trying to change.
You're just, you're saying what?
No, I'll get off you two, let's go back to work.
So do we have, we have, do we have something that can, you know what to do, Abby, from this?
No, depends on whatever, what you all want to do.
We want to define a structure.
Okay.
So three car garage is okay.
Yes.
You don't need a special permit.
Okay, and then you want to add in?
Remove area.
And then, so you want to remove the word area from the existing definition?
Yeah.
And then?
Maintain the three, four visible.
I like the language that Nora read, just change five to three. And I don't know if we can do that to me, is that inconsistent within our bylaws, so we're messing ourselves up? So in one area it refers to three cars and the other refers to five? Because that talks about screening, that talks about making it less offensive to see four cars.
Or a special permit.
Right, but it, once you engage the special permit, you have to do the screening.
Not necessarily.
Well, according to what Nora read, you do. The only difference is her number was five.
I think, I think what you want to say is the parking or storage of more than three motor vehicles within an enclosure or covered structure, or visible at normal eye level from any point on an abutting lot that is not screened from view, and then also the commercial, go on from there with what you have with the commercial.
Yeah, I, that sounds like something.
So that's the three, three visible, I'd say.
Did you get on that, Abby?
Yes.
Because I.
I, I think so. So it's essentially, I think you have on page four of my memo, the highlighted red version that I have, but you would also add in, add to that, expand on that to further modify it to say, or more than three spaces visible from an abutting lot.
More than three spaces?
Three, three vehicles.
Vehicles, yeah, one space. Can you read that?
Is that right?
Because this is what we're talking about sending to FinCom, right?
So it'd be the parking or storage of more than three motor vehicles within an enclosed, enclosure or covered structure, or more than three vehicles visible from an abutting lot, and then continue with the rest of the definition that existed then.
I think you need to say it's normal eye level, not down.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, whatever, it's in that language, right?
At eye level, okay.
How'd you find that?
I make a motion.
It's obscure.
Okay.
I make a motion to modify the article as, as discussed and described by Abby.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
All those abstaining? Alright, so that passes four to one. The next item was the fence height. At our public, at the FinCom hearing, Mr. Olunoff phrased, brought this back to us, and who wants to? Abby, why don't you tell us what the?
Right, there is an existing section in the zoning by law that allows a special permit for up to eight feet, a special permit for the zoning board of appeals. At your February 26th meeting, you didn't recommend any changes to that, but at the public hearing last week, Mr. Olunoff suggested removing that section. Essentially, that would mean there'd be no special permit option to go up to eight feet, it would just limit fences up to seven feet by right, and then if anyone wanted to go higher, they would have to make an argument for a variance. So the proposal was to eliminate the special permit option that exists currently.
If we allowed eight before, why are we not allowing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Seven by right, eight by special permit.
Well, right, the proposal now that the planning board had recommended to FinCom was to increase the by right height of fences up to seven feet.
Right. But before, you, you could go from six to eight, up to eight.
Right.
But now, Mr. Olunoff is saying, take away this special permit available to you to go from seven to eight?
Yes.
What's that you're talking about?
Fence.
Perimeter, special permit for perimeter fence.
I just want to point one thing out, by having that special permit section that says you can only go to a maximum of eight, you've got a cap on it. If you take that section out, there's no maximum, and now it's not a, a use variance, it's a dimensional variance. So by having that section in, you're saying there's, there's no allowable fence greater than eight, that defines a different type of structure. So right now, they, you wouldn't be able to do it if you take that section out, I think you increase the likelihood. I don't think there are many places where residents have come looking for higher fences, but there have been a few. There've been a couple that have been looking for 10 foot fences, and they've been denied because we have a section in the bylaw that says the maximum that could be granted by special permit is eight.
Yeah, or just leave it in.
So what's?
Um, hold on.
Why don't we?
On the sheet.
Six, three, ten?
Yep.
I don't understand why we take, take that out.
I want to take it out.
Yeah, so that's what I.
We're just talking about increasing the by-right, not changing the cap.
That's it.
Okay, so the original language is good?
Do I need a motion for that?
I don't see a problem with it.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
You've already voted.
It's already, it's already.
It's already done.
Okay, so for the town meeting articles, we had already, everything else, I think we had covered at the last meeting.
Right, except for.
Is there any feedback we wanted to consider from FinCom, or?
Yes, the open space plan article.
Okay.
You had also recommended, um, forwarding the open space and recreation plan to the finance and warrant commission, um, and to town meeting for endorsement. Um, it was not well-received at the, um, commission meeting last week, so, you know, we had brought it forward, um, because the finance and warrant commission reviews all warrant articles, and we were hoping that you would, um, bring that forward to town meeting. However, you don't have to. If you want, if you'd like, you could withdraw that article and submit it directly to the state for the state department of conservation and recreation approval.
It seemed like to me what they were looking for was, "The only reason you're coming to us is to open possible doors for grant money." And we didn't identify what grants required, um, the town meeting approval process. So they were left a bit in the lurch as to, "Why do we need to talk about this? Why are, why is, why are we here talking about that?" That was my impression of, of their reaction to our presentation. Is that accurate?
I think that's accurate. I think that they do not want to comment at all on the plan, and they don't feel that they can send it to town meeting without either recommending it for approval or recommending it for indefinite postponement. They could be advised by council otherwise on whether or not they have a third option, but I think it's, it's too late to have that argument and have that discussion right now. So I think the option is either you bring it forward to FinCom and take a chance that they recommend indefinite postponement because they're not comfortable recommending approval, or you withdraw the article. There is no need for bringing the open space plan to town meeting. I do think this is a discussion you wanna have further before you go too far into the comprehensive plan. So Abby and I did look into this to see what had been done in the past. The open space plan and the comprehensive plan were both approved in 2000. They did go to town meeting, but it wasn't for an endorsement article, it was for a resolution. They did things a little bit differently back then. You were able to bring an article for just a resolution. Now, I believe articles, I don't believe you can bring a topic to town meeting unless it's in an article. We did this, um, I think it was probably about five years ago with the pedestrian and bicycle safety plan that we had with, uh, Westwood and Dedham joined together on a bicycle safety, bicycle and pedestrian safety plan, and we had the planning board adopt that plan and then brought it to town meeting for endorsement. The reason you go to town meeting for an endorsement is for buy-in, so that the community understands that we have this plan and these are goals that we're working towards, but it's not a requirement. Town meeting does not have to endorse the open space plan in this case because the FinCom is not interested in reading it, and I wouldn't recommend that they recommend one way or the other if they haven't read the document. They clearly are not interested in reading it, so I'd encourage you to simply request that the selectmen withdraw that article, but then engage in a discussion with FinCom, with town council, about whether there's a procedure to get the comprehensive plan before town meeting. Because I think that when you, when you plan just as the planning board, it's a little bit different than when you planned for the whole community and introduce a plan that you expect people, um, to take seriously and endorse. I, I think it's important to have town meeting eventually, um, accept, endorse by resolution or by other means, a plan that you want to bring forward. But in this case, at this late, late date, with a FinCom that has no interest in reading a hundred-plus-page document, I think your best course is to request withdrawal.
Was FinCom a warrant commission in 2000?
Uh, they were warrant, not, they were, they were, um, I'm sorry, they were the finance commission.
So they didn't have to hear this?
Charter change in 2011 made them the finance and warrant commission. It had been their tradition to hear all articles before that, and now it's their responsibility to hear and recommend in favor or oppose to all articles. So their, their authority has changed slightly.
I just, I just think it's important that we, um, I think we should withdraw it, but I, I think it's important to note that we're, you know, we're not withdrawing it because we think it's defective or something like that, but that there seems to be, this process doesn't seem to, they're, they're not comfortable with the process, and for the comprehensive plan, we need to figure out how to get it to town meeting, you know, how to get, uh, endorsement from town meeting. Because we've told people all along that this is a process where we're gonna have all these public hearings and discussion, and then it's gonna go through a, a vetted process, and so it's, we're not abandoning that, but it's, um, it's clear that it's, this is not the process that the FinCom, um, is prepared to, uh, follow for us, or with us this time, so.
So I did, I did hear some other, um, notes from, from some of the members of FinCom where they were, they were concerned about some of the actions, the action plans within the open space, um, and the concern about some of the fiduciary commitments from within the document. Did you hear any of that, or no?
Yeah, I, I think there was definitely, there was criticisms about the, um, you know, the process, uh, and what was in the action plan. They were very specific that there, there's concern that an endorsement would imply endorsement of every single thing that was listed in that action plan. Some of the, one of, a couple of members said, "Well, we'd be happy to endorse the goals," you know, "How about if we just endorse the goals?" But again, it's kinda getting laid in the, in the process and, and all, and I just, it kinda comes back to that thing of, um, we want public, you know, we want everybody's input and everything. So maybe we keep it open, we keep the hearing open, we proceed as Abby has suggested. We have, um, after town meeting, we can have additional hearings, we can talk to, about how we get this to town meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Olunoff.
Steve Olunoff, and I'm chairman of the open space and recreation plan committee. So I recommend, uh, we just withdraw this because, you know, we're gonna submit it anyway, it's gonna be approved, and, and whether, you know, we can get approval from town, uh, meeting anytime we want, uh, and we can do it in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. But I think people should realize, and particularly the FinCom, is this is not a fiscally constrained document. In other words, it just says what we wanna do, and because it's not fiscally constrained, doesn't mean anything's ever gonna happen until you come up with the money to do it, in which case, it'll go through the whole process all over again for every single action item, and every single goal, and every single action item that you're trying to execute in that, it, it has to go through, uh, the process. And the biggest problem is finding the money to do it. So this is only a plan, and, uh, I, so I think they made too big a deal out of it, but if that's the case, then I think we could just withdraw the article.
I see there are a couple people still here. Did, uh, anyone wanna comment on this, or?
So I make a motion to withdraw the warrant article requesting town meeting endorsement of the open space and recreation plan update.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. Um, and then just to, I hope no one was waiting for 3:40, Clapper Tree Street, because we did, um, move to continue that to, uh, Tuesday, March 19th, right, or?
Yep.
So that was the next item on the agenda, but we've, nobody's getting up angrily, so I think we're good.
Open them up.
I think we have, we have one more item on the agenda, Abby?
Do we need to do?
Right, and then.
Oh, oh, of course, we have to, um.
So regarding the open space and recreation plan, I make a motion to continue, uh, the public hearing to Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM at 50 Carby Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The public hearing is continued for the open space and recreation plan.
Last item on the agenda is an approval not required plan, University Avenue. Assessor's map, 33 Lot 056 on East Street of Universe, on, on East Street of University Avenue. East Street. What does that mean?
Oh, sorry, East Side Street, yes. So.
Oh, I just turned that on.
The A&R plan, are we on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, A&R plan.
All right, so you have an A&R plan that creates three lots on the east side of University Ave. Um, the first lot, uh, actually, I don't have the pointer, but the first lot, um, in that corner, um, is the, creating the lot that you approved at the office building at your last meeting on February 26th?
And just declare, it's the east side, it's not East Street.
Oh, sorry.
Intersection road, intersecting road?
Um, University Ave is at the top of the plan there, and then Brigham, uh, Brigham Way, and then.
Oh, it's over there, okay.
A third lot is the park in the middle. Let's leave it as, as an unbuildable lot. And then coming down the other side is the drive that leads down to, um, Bridges. And then the, the, um, third lot is out on the corner of University Ave and the lot that leads down to Bridges that is undeveloped at this time. Um, so these lots all have frontage, the minimum frontage is 50 feet required, so they all have that 50 feet of frontage.
None of these are the Pulte location, right, that we're talking about?
No, 'cause that has its own lot that was done, I think, last spring.
Okay.
So no motion.
No, no motion required, we just need to sign, correct?
Well, we can.
You should motion to endorse.
We can move to, having found that it meets the, um, frontage and, uh, one of the last requirements, we can then proceed to.
You should motion.
As a approval not required plan.
Yep.
I'm going to have to abstain. Discussion and voting.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, Chris, you're recusing himself.
All right, so I move to.
Do you need public, um, comment on this?
Is there any, is there any public comment on this A and, approval not required plan?
Uh, so I make a motion to approve. So I make a motion to approve, um, this A&R at University Ave.
Second.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I will note that Chris has abstained. Okay, other business. Um, the, the citizen plan or training collaborative, has anybody signed up for that?
Right.
I did, actually, because I saw there were a couple of things that were.
Oh, that's cool.
Interesting. Uh, and I highly recommend it, but it's Saturday day. Um, let's see, anything else, Abby, any, I'll just go through here. Updates, Gay Street Sidewalk, 50% design, public meeting is rescheduled for Thursday, April 4th at the library at 7:00 PM. So Thursday, April 4th will be the latest information on the Gay Street Sidewalk design. And comprehensive plan, uh, Abby?
Um, coming soon is a survey. We're looking at, um, you know, trying to take a look at the questions and responses that we've heard at the last couple of public hearings, reviewing it with the comprehensive plan committee and the, um, chair before that goes live. Um, we did have the RFP, the call for the consultant for vision session was closed today, so we received some responses. Um, so we'll be reviewing those and hopefully selecting someone this week or in the next week or so. Um, updates for Islington Center, just wanted to touch on. We do have a building submitted for, um, the CBS building, so that's under review right now, and I will be reviewing that to make sure it, um, complies with your special permit approval. Um, the Blue Heart Tavern unfortunately was not able to be saved, and the applicant is looking to demolish that building.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm just here if you wanna have any more information on that. I just wanted to let you know that the developer had an engineer and the mover, the building mover, the same mover that had, um, moved the Colburn School and had moved the Blue Heart Tavern to its current location, looked at it to move it again to the next location, and they determined that it was not movable in its current state and would have to have most of the historic material replaced in order to move it. We called in our own expert, Peter Paravellos, who has, is the former chairman of our historical commission and whose business has been to move historic buildings. That's an area he specializes in, and he concurred that while the building could be moved, in order to move it, it would require complete reconstruction of the building, and the historic nature of the building is its use, not its architecture. So what you would end up with would be essentially a recreation of the Blue Heart Tavern building, which isn't meaningful. Um, and so the developer's not interested in spending the money that it would cost to reconstruct the Blue Heart Tavern, and the, the town is not interested in having a reconstructed Blue Heart Tavern that is not meaningful. We looked at some other parties who had expressed interest in the past, and they're not interested. So the historic Blue Heart Tavern unfortunately will be demolished in the coming days. Um, it has been fully documented by the historical commission prior to the move to its temporary storage location. So the information we have is preserved. Um, they, the developer will still remove a couple of articles that can be salvaged from it. I think the mantelpieces were really, two mantelpieces were about all that was, um, still his, still original material, other than walls and floors, so.
So it's, um, it's just, it, the, the situation is now it's infeasible to move it, basically, that, uh, as we were there with Peter Paravellos and Steve Olunoff and I were looking at it before it was moved, and, um, I guess it's like one move and done is kind of the, it's a little frustrating because it's completely anticipatable that this would happen. Um, I mean, it seems like that was the concern at the time.
The hope was that it could be moved and that it could be done in a way that would salvage some of the historical material, but that is no longer the case. I think the longer it sat there, the longer the approval process was for the project required that to sit longer than, um, ever intended, and at this point, it simply is not salvageable. If someone were interested and was able to express interest immediately, they're welcome to take it, but they would have quite an expense in, um, trying to move that building.
I thought there were grants, there was like some kind of grant money or something?
Yes, there was. So there was up to $75,000 that were, uh, was allocated by our state rep, um, state representative and senator for this project to defray the cost of restoring it, but it's not sufficient.
Is there something, a thought towards what's gonna go in, that placeholder?
There, there is no placeholder. So the way that the decision was approved by this board and the way that the land disposition agreement was written, the land on the west side of Washington Street would be town land, where we would put Wentworth Hall and an expanded community center, the library and the youth and family services office, and we would carve out a parcel for the Blue Heart Tavern if it could be saved and if it could be moved to there. If it's not moved to there, that land simply gets.
It's just green space.
Into the, into the town parcel. It gives us a little bit more flexibility on how to cite the, the Wentworth Hall building on that lot.
That's great.
So that corner, the corner that we marked out for the Blue Heart, it becomes the property of the town.
Right.
And then it would just be, uh, it would be up to the town, like if we wanted to.
Set it back.
It doesn't, right, it, it doesn't have to be developed as a separate lot. If the town chose to, or if, if someone recommended, you could build a structure.
But it's not a.
In that location, but I think we would want.
It's like 1,500 square feet or something.
It's very small. It was only large enough to hold the building itself.
It's just the footprint of the building itself, I think, or just the foundation would fit there, and that's it.
That's right, that's right. So I think the idea is that the land just gives us a little more flexibility in how we develop the addition to Wentworth Hall.
That's great.
Thank you. Brian Hardeman, 40, Westdale Road. I, I just hope you guys use this as a, uh, learning experience. You know, that project of Islington Center, a big part of that was moving the Blue Heart Tavern and being saved, is why it got approved. And now to find out the developer didn't take enough precaution to protect it from the weather so it could be moved again is a shame, an absolute shame. In the future, I hope, whoever makes these decisions learns from this and puts in place monies or a bond that if they promise to do something, it gets done. If they don't do it, you get their bond. And you're losing a valuable piece of history of Westwood that a lot of people used that idea of that being moved to approve that decision of Westwood, uh, Islington Center. Thank you.
You should respond to that.
Abby, what, uh?
Just wanna clarify that the planning board did review that very much during your special permit, and you did not require the Blue Heart Tavern being relocated and restored. You didn't require it, however, you left language that if it could be restored and relocated and if it was financially feasible, then you allowed a location for it to be in front of the relocated Wentworth Hall. of the relocated Wentworth Hall, but you didn't require that it had to be saved, because the applicant did during the hearing say that it was not financially feasible. Although since April, he was looking at trying to make it financially feasible and was very interested in, in restoring that building and relocating it.
If I could just add to that, it was very clear, not only in the board's decision, but in the land development agreement, in every discussion before the FinCom and at town meeting, that there was an option under which the, the land would be reserved for either the developer or the town or a private party to relocate and restore the building if it was found to be feasible. It was never guaranteed, and in fact, the date for making a decision of that was not to have even occurred until after the attorney general approved the articles after town meeting. So it was clearly an open question from the beginning. Every effort was made. I'd also like to point out, it wasn't a case of, of weathering the building. The building was unstable when it was moved the first time. Every effort was made to preserve the building in place. It was just a matter of having the engineers take a look at it and determine that the removal of all of the original material that was left in the building would be necessary. And then the question had to do with the, the nature of the historic properties of the building, and they were not in the architecture, they were in the use. The ability in the old building to touch a wall that one of our colonial ancestors had touched, to walk on the floors that one of our colonial ancestors had walked on, that was what we were trying to preserve. And when that was no longer a possibility, when the walls and the floors would have to be gone, then there's no longer a point in moving the building.
All right, well, I know at the time, definitely, I couldn't, I don't think we could think of, we considered all these things, and I was afraid that this was a possible outcome. I couldn't think of anything else that we could do at the time that would make it more likely to avoid this outcome. I don't know. It is very frustrating because it was, it the, it is the use of that, and, you know, if the town owns the property, maybe, well, we got a lot of things to spend money on, so I don't think that's, so. All right, well, that's.
Termination for another date.
Do we have other items, Abby?
Uh, no, I don't think so, unless you have questions. That's it. No minutes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, would there be, no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?